Good evening. The regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council for August the 1st, 2017 is now in session. Please join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people who live and serve in this nation under God, infinite wisdom, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask you to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, as discussed with you earlier, I would like to amend the agenda, tonight's agenda, for a closed session, following our final business item 8A, to discuss, to consider a personnel matter regarding individual public officer or employer of the town. Having said that, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, as I've, with the reposed, with the reposed change?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have an agenda, counsel. Thank you. This time, I'd like to recognize the town planner.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, I have a report for you all for tonight for the month of July. There were nine zoning permits issued, 20 building permits issued. Those consisted of two new single-family dwellings, one remodel, one remodel repair, and 16 others. There are currently 24 single-family dwellings under construction in the town, and the total amount of fees collected in July was $7,771.80. If you recall, you all, council did authorize staff and designated funding to update the town's currently adopted land use plan, and I wanted to report their request for proposals from qualified consultants to update the town's currently adopted land use plan. Has been posted on the town's website, and it's been distributed to the NC Plan List Serve mailing list. All proposals are due on Friday, August 11th, by 5:00 PM, and we can report back to you as we receive requests. With respect to code enforcement, there was only one warning citation letter sent out, and that was for high weeds and grass violation. With respect to the August 7, 2017 special planning board meeting, that'll be next Monday, it'll be another special meeting designated by the chairperson to continue reviewing comments on Module 1 of the town code update project. And lastly, regarding the August 21st planning board meeting, that will be, the agenda item for that would be review of zoning text amendment application, ZTA 1702, which is a text amendment submitted by Casey Varnell to amend the town's current building height requirements. Are there any questions at this time?
I have just one question that doesn't relate to this. What is the status of, over at the marketplace, you know, Starbucks is to be separated out?
Yes.
Is there any activity? I haven't seen any other than the site development that took place.
Yes, sir. I heard secondhand from someone in real estate that that was not going to happen. And coincidentally, I received a phone call from a representative with Aston Properties about a week later, and I asked them about that, and they confirmed it, that the area that you all approved in the site plan, that was where the multi-tenant building was to be located, which is currently now vegetated, vacant. It is a repair area for their septic system, and the state would not allow them to make any changes to that area. So that killed that project for them. The representative from Aston did indicate that they are looking at other options for a multi-tenant space, perhaps somewhere else on the property. If you look at the property, as you know, there is a lot of parking in the northeast corner, or even the south corner adjacent to the bank. Over existing coverage may be something that they come to us with, but they're, they're not sure at this point.
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Wes.
All right. Well, if there are no other questions, I would like to turn it over to Heather Kiefer. She's with the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management, and she's here to give a brief presentation on the community rating system and the town's recent improvement in the program as a participating community. As you recall, in previous reports I've given, we improved of a CRS rating of seven to a six. So Heather's here to attest to that. So I'll turn it over to her.
Good afternoon, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. It's my pleasure to recognize the town of Southern Shores on their accomplishment of increasing to a Class 6 in the community rating system, which I'll refer to as the CRS. We'll start with, okay, I did it right now. We'll start with just going over some goals of the CRS. It is to encourage, recognize, and reward communities that have reduced and avoided flood damage to insurable property, strengthening and support insurance aspects of the National Flood Insurance Program, and to foster comprehensive floodplain management. Some other quick facts about the CRS is that it's a FEMA program administered by ISO, and it was implemented in 1990. It recognizing, it's recognizing communities that administer regulations beyond the minimum National Flood Insurance Program standards. It's incentive-based and voluntary, so that speaks to your community, and your staff and your guidance pick out activities that fit your community, that would also gain points in this credit-based system. There's 10 classes, you're now a Class 6. There's 500 points per class with a 5% insurance premium discount as you go through each class. The map above shows the United States, and if you can see, the coast of North Carolina has quite a few CRS communities, and you are in very good company. Also, you can see also that there are both blue and the yellowy-orange, and you are now, you are safely in the center of the blue communities with a 6, Class 6. So that's very, very good for you guys. Then you can see here, this is the nationwide classifications, and the bulk of the communities that are in the CRS right now are a Class 8, and your community is a Class 6. So once again, you guys are in a very, very good place and should be very proud of that. And then also, if you look at the standings in North Carolina, you're going to be in that 20% range. And if you'd like to, this slide here, it talks about specifically how it affects your community and your population. So you've got 1,178 flood policies in force, so those people see a benefit for you being in the CRS. There's, there's about a million dollars in annual paid, payment and premiums in your community, and that averages approximately $895 for each structure. You get a townwide savings annually of $204,000, and that's about $174 per, per structure annually. And then this is $48 of savings for the policy since you were Class 7, and then that's a $55,000 savings that the community gets from going from a Class 7 down to a Class 6. Some noteworthy things about your community and what made this accomplishment happen is that you have two staff members that provide floodplain management assistance throughout your community. One of your staff members is credentialed as a certified floodplain manager. You guys have a floodplain management plan, which not all communities have. You have flood protection information available and easy to access on your town's website. You have flood data digitally available, and also hard copies available at Town Hall, which allows better risk communication and administration of your flood-prone areas. And you have a two-foot freeboard requirement, which is above the minimum standard to elevate houses to the base flood elevation. Dabney, Shelton, and Wes Haskett have done a great job administering the community's program. And at this time, Mayor, I have a plaque to present to you to recognize your community and its accomplishment.
I'll be right there. Great job. David Cole, our police chief, for your report. Good evening, David. Or good afternoon, still.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to give you the June 2017 report. I was unable to do so last month. I'll give you July's and August. Jennifer's on vacation, and I wasn't going to make her come back in to do that. For June, as you can see, we had officers handle 972 calls for service. That's about 17 down compared to last June. Under the incidents, which were actual crimes that were reported, we had a total of 36. You can see the breakdown there. We had five criminal arrests. We had seven motor vehicle accidents. Officers handed out 47 traffic citations. And they also handed out another 59 warning citations. And as far as local ordinances and violations, most of that was due to our community resource officer. There were 141 local violation tickets issued. One thing I would like to add before I end my report is that just about a month ago, I believe it was July 11th during this council meeting, there was an incident on Wild Pony, as most of you are aware. A gentleman tried to shoot another roommate. Fortunately, he missed, and he decided to barricade himself armed in his residence. We spent about three and a half hours negotiating with him, and God bless it, no one was hurt, and it ended peacefully. But I think it's important that the community know, as well as the council, the officers, not only with the Southern Shores Police Department, but also Dare County Sheriff's Office Assistant Kitty Hawk and the Town of Duck, along with the Volunteer Fire Department, did an exceptionally excellent job under the circumstances. It was very high tents, they were very professional, kept their demeanor through the entire incident. And what's the most important thing is that they get to go home to their families each night, and we're just happy that it turned out the way it did. So you should be proud of your local law enforcement. Any questions? No.
You mentioned in June, since you went back to June, that there were vehicle break-ins in our community.
Yes.
Can you give us an update on that status? Because it came, well, I had a lady email about, that lived on Sea Oats, about a suspicious car and a Virginia license plate on her property. They called you guys, and the concern was whether or not somebody was casing their house.
Right.
Or if it was a connection there to the vehicle break-ins. And at the end, you guys towed that away, and, but some way, there's some rumors that got generated around what happened with that incident. So if you could explain that one a little bit for us, please do.
We made a couple of arrests as far as some of the vehicle break-ins. The incident that you're talking about, I'm very familiar with. We did not tow the vehicle. It's on private property. We did not have the authority to tow the vehicle. We ran a check on the plate, make sure it wasn't stolen, person wasn't wanted, and none of those things red flagged. Officers advised the owner that she could have it towed because it was on private property. And we helped her with that process, and the vehicle was towed. What it was, was gentleman decided to come down here to see one of his girlfriends who lived next door, and didn't want to have her boyfriend see his car in his driveway. So he parked in the house next door. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. That answers the question.
Coming to our doorstep.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Thank you, David, for too much information.
We'll be coming to Peyton Place.
Captain Dave Evans, Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department. Good afternoon, Dave. Chief Limbacher came to be here this evening, and David's going to make his, make his report.
Mayor, members of council, staff members. Yes, Chief Limbacher apologized. He had another commitment, fire department-wise, this evening, so he couldn't attend, so I have the honor of making this report, presenting it to you. This past month, July 2017, Southern Shores Fire Department responded to a total of 90 calls, which compared to last year, was the exact same number we had. A little bit different since being the fire and rescue, but still had 90 calls. We had 12 fire calls. We had 46 rescue with EMS calls, six hazardous conditions with no fire, 13 service calls, three good intent calls, nine false alarms, and one special incident type. Breaking that down just a little bit farther, we had actually 11 building fires. We had one, it was cooking fire, contained tooth container, I believe it was an oven fire, I believe it was. We had two medical assists, patient assist with EMS. We had 32 EMS calls excluding vehicle accidents. Did have three motor vehicle accidents with injuries. We had two motor vehicle accidents without injuries. We had one that was a lock-in. Somebody had a child that was locked in the car, I believe it was, that was possibly running at that time. We had one search for a person in the water. We had one removal of a victim from stalled elevator. Four surf rescue calls. Three hazardous conditions. Two gas leaks, either natural gas or LP gas. It was one arcing or shorted electrical equipment. We had six service calls, one police assist, four public services, two cover assignment. We would stand by for other, other fire departments if we do. Two, excuse me, three smoke or odor of smokes. One smoke detector activation, one heat detector activation, one smoked detector activation with no fire, it was unintentional. Two detectors with no fire, and four alarm system activations, and one citizen complaint. You have questions?
Any questions?
I don't know what a citizen complaint was. If you have any other further questions that I can't handle, you may defer them till next, next month. Maybe Chief Limbacher could do that.
Thank you for your report.
Yeah, thanks.
Appreciate it, Captain. Town manager's report, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, a very brief report tonight, midsummer. First item, we were informed, the finance officer and I were informed that our, after 10 months, our reimbursement project worksheets for Hurricane Matthew are finally being processed. So hopefully, we'll see the light at the end of the tunnel for the town to get paid back for its recovery money from Hurricane Matthew. This is hurricane season, many town staff members have been in briefings with the county emergency management. Dare County informs that it is put out for bid and getting a new debris contractor. We will be interviewing, the other towns will be interviewing that debris contractor hopefully in the next week, so that we can decide if we want to have a, have a joint agreement with the county on that contract. And recall, we do have a secondary already in line. Crowder Gulf is that contractor, so this will be a new one, D and J. The walkway for East Dogwood Trail that the council directed, a grant application be filed, that grant application will be filed tomorrow with the Dare County Tourism Board. The grant season for that cycle opened today, and so I'll be taking that over tomorrow at the council's direction. And lastly, the public information meeting for the council's directed beach nourishment will be held tomorrow here in the Pitt Center at 1:00 PM. It'll be a public information briefing by the coastal engineers, and also the contractor will have a representative here as well. So that will occur tomorrow. Current status of the beach nourishment, the nourishment is right at the Kitty Hawk Pier. They have been working today, and hopefully it'll be entering Southern Shores Boundary, hopefully tonight, and proceeding north as planned. We did have some confusion last week over the, over some old sandbags that were on the beach that had not been located in the past, and they're, they're now covered to the satisfaction of Coast, Division of Coastal Management. Hopefully, they will not reappear before the nourishment will be placed. But that's the, the plan for tomorrow. So hopefully, we'll be seeing some activity out there tomorrow at the same time that the public information meeting occurs. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions anybody has about town operations. That's the report.
I don't have any.
Any questions?
I just question, Peter, they're on the south side, are they going to push that through the pier, or are they going to move that over to the other side?
They are pushing the pipes through right now.
Okay.
With the equipment, and then, of course, the track vehicles cannot get under the pier, so they have acts, other acts, two accesses that they can get to the beach, and they'll have to drive around. Not quite sure how they're going to do that on asphalt driveway at the hotel, but that's one of the access points. So the pipes are being pushed under right now as we speak, and again, I'm not sure about how the vehicles are supposed to occur, but that's what I'm told.
It looks like a long way to push.
Yeah, that's a long push.
That pipe, they run that northern, northern leg.
I would just, thank you, Peter. I would just mention one thing. Our public works people went out, I think it was Thursday, and worked most of the day cutting off those pilings that were sticking up about two and a half feet above the sand level. Very few, a few little pieces of sandbag, but not very much. They cut them off, and by about the same time the next day, as a result of that little northeast we had with, with the wind, they cut off in two and three, two and two and a half feet of pilings and, and boards. By the next day, about the same time, there was two and a half feet of pilings sticking up again. We had moved, I don't know how you calculate how many thousands of cubic yards of sand that Mother Nature moved overnight. And then the very next day, we didn't cut those pilings off. The very next day, they were practically covered again. And now they are covered, and the sandbags are mostly covered. So you get some perspective of what, what that, the ocean's doing to that, to that ocean front, by, when you think of the hundreds of thousands of cubic yards of sand that had to be moved to make that happen. It's pretty impressive what can, what takes place at that time. It's pretty, it's pretty frightening, too. Thank you, Peter, once again.
Wes, planning board?
Town attorney.
I'm sorry.
My apologies, Ben.
I don't have anything to report to the specific items that I have on this.
See, I knew that. No way. Sorry, Ben. Wes, I think, are you up now? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor, members of council. Chairperson Williams could not make it tonight, so just a brief report that the planning board met on July 17th, and they continued their discussion and comments of the town code, Module 1 of the town code update project. And as I noted earlier, they will hold a special meeting on Monday, August 7th, to continue their discussion of Module 1 of the town code update project. The discussion, the last meeting started, I forget which page it was on, but it was regarding building height, and the conversation did not conclude. Any questions?
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
At this time, I would have set aside time for public comment. Jerry Sullivan? Good afternoon, Jerry.
Afternoon. Into the evening, Mayor Bennett. Mayor Bennett and council, I'm going to be brief. First, I'd like to compliment the council, particularly Mr. McDonald on making the motion at the last meeting to reinstitute the capital improvement planning committee and put together a 10-year capital improvement plan. I'm hoping this plan will address all the major projects, including streets, walkways, beach nourishment, and the fire station, and that finally will have a basis for forecasting expenses and also how we plan to fund these things in the future. And my only other thing I wanted to mention was I noticed an agenda item to continue with the walking path design for South Dogwood Trail. Given that we expected to rebuild, South Dogwood probably started within the next three years, I'm wondering, wouldn't it make more sense to combine the walking path design with the road plan? Because the road plan could, you know, potentially impact the walking path. Also, shouldn't the walking path project be prioritized along with all the other capital improvements on the list before we start spending money? Thanks for letting me speak on these important items.
Thank you, Jerry. Ann Schrodger?
Sheila, are we off the clock here?
No, ma'am. I just said I forgot.
All right. So I have three minutes. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all. I hope you're having a good summer. I'm here just to talk about the traffic item. I hope you all know that this summer has been horrendous in terms of the traffic through the woods, what we call the cut-through traffic. And I can say that in 26 years of living in the woods, that's on North Dogwood Trail, on South Dogwood Trail, and Hickory Trail, it's the worst I've ever seen. Every Saturday of July, there has been bumper-to-bumper backed-up traffic on Hickory Trail, where I live, which is at the intersection of Hickory Trail and East Dogwood Trail. Now, that's just a backdrop, because what I really would like to urge tonight is that you think in terms of can-do, not can't-do. I looked at the report from town staff, concrete options available, and I think they're much too massive, and you need to think about what you can do and where you can get consensus, baby steps, in other words. And I think a possible baby step could be at the left turn signal at the elementary school, just change the timer so fewer cars go through. Don't prohibit the left turn, just change the timer, one or two cars. Stagger the traffic. Discourage people from lining up in that left turn lane. Last Saturday, it may have been because of the accident at Porpoise Run, everybody was turning through the neighborhood. People were not going to 158. I passed through at 4:00, and they were all lined up to turn, and 158 was wide open. That's one of my suggestions. That's one of my suggestions. The other is, I think that you can move the traffic quicker on Highway 12 than it currently runs. And I, one suggestion I would make is to think of it like stadium traffic after a concert or a game. How do you move that traffic and get it going so people get home? Well, typically, you use police officers at strategic intersections, and get them to control the traffic flow rather than the actual traffic lights. I defer to the police on how that would be done, but it seems to me that Dare County and Currituck County could participate in such an effort. And Duck, you might be able to control the pedestrian crossing with police officers if they would direct pedestrians as to where they can cross and when they can cross. And finally, I would ask that you think experimentally. You don't have to do it all in one swoop. Maybe one Saturday, you close Hickory Trail, see what happens. Maybe another Saturday, you close Sea Oats and see what happens, or even Dogwood Trail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. That's the last person who signed up, so there'll be no, I'll close public comment at this time. Item five under Old Business, consideration of organizing and appointing a new capital infrastructure improvement planning committee requested by Councilman McDonald. Councilman McDonald, would you like to address this?
Nothing like tearing it down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, we voted to reestablish that committee, and I guess directions weren't clear. So what I would do is say that we need to appoint two members from this council, and appoint two citizens to that committee to reestablish it. I would suggest, or actually, I would make a motion that the mayor and the mayor pro temp each point one member from the community to that committee, and then we just open the floor for nominations from this committee, this council to that committee.
If you're going to have the mayor and the mayor pro temp appoint two, one member each to the committee.
The community members.
Community members, right. Then you want, how many members do you want total from the community? Just two?
Do you want more? That's open to the council.
Let me, let me make, let me make an amendment to your motion, I think you're making a motion to that effect, that we go ahead and have each council member, two council members serve, the mayor, mayor pro temp, that's fine, have each council member then appoint one member to the committee.
So you'd have five members on that?
Five community residents, five residents who would serve on that committee. We were constantly talking about being inclusive and getting people involved. I see as an opportunity to do that, and that gives, also gives us a good mix on the committee from people that just each council member knows and somebody else might not know. So I propose that as part of your, as part of your motion.
That's fine.
As an amendment to your motion. Any thoughts on that, council, before I ask for a second?
I have no problem with that. I'll second it. I think each one can nominate somebody.
Thank you.
Smart person.
So.
I'm just.
He did second it.
I know.
Any further discussion on that? I would, I would add that these, these five candidates be presented to council at the next, at the next council meeting in September.
That's fine.
And we can, we can choose our time to put the committee back in action based on that.
Well, I'd like to, I think we need to put that back in action fairly soon.
Pretty quick, I agree, I agree. Any discussion, council? All in favor of the motion that's been made by Council McDonald and modified slightly by me? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion's made and carried to reorganize our capital infrastructure improvement planning Next item on the agenda is.
Excuse me. We need to appoint council members.
I'm sorry, I thought we, I thought we did that as part of the motion, that the mayor and the mayor pro temp would be on the council.
No. Well, that'd be, that would be fine with me, if you want to do that. What I said, my, my motion was the mayor appoint one citizen, mayor pro temp appoint one citizen. That's not how I worded it, so we'd have to have another motion, which I will make.
That's fine.
That the mayor and the mayor pro temp serve on that committee.
As council members on that committee.
As council members on that committee.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's made and carried to have the mayor pro temp and the mayor serve on the C-I-I-P committee. Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Under item B, again, consideration of town code options for accessory structures containing living space. And I'll ask the town attorney to brief us on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll do my best. I provided two, we had discussed this at a couple of different meetings. My initial plan was to send this through the planning board to get some idea of what they thought might be more preferable, but at the last meeting, council asked for this to come to them first, first to consider what might be more preferable. So what I prepared was two proposed ordinance amendments. The first one would essentially keep the status quo and allow, disallow any living, any future living space in accessory structures. However, it would change some of the language regarding how living space is determined and clear up some definition issues related to the use of living space, habitable space, and enclosed living space in different places throughout the code, and remove the living space concept from the habitable floors and stories definition and make it its own definition so that it's more easy to find. So if the council's desire, there's going to be three choices. Do absolutely nothing, and leave it exactly as it is, and then we're done. If the council's desire is to leave the concept of living space and accessory structures as being not allowed, then that would accomplish that. However, if they'd like it to be not allowed, but would also like to clarify this enclosed living space definition issue, then the first ordinance that I proposed would do that. The second ordinance I proposed would, again, clarify the definitions related to enclosed living space, but it would also allow for some form of accessory, living space and accessory structures short of being a dwelling unit, which would be something that you could, I can tell you what the definition of the dwelling unit is to make you get it better. Dwelling unit means one room or more rooms or living spaces connected together constituting a separate, independent housekeeping establishment for owner occupancy or rental or lease or physically separated from any other rooms. Living spaces or dwelling units which may be in the same structure and containing independent cooking and sleeping facilities for a single family. Essentially, a dwelling unit is an apartment, the, an area of a structure that's separate from the rest of your house that someone could completely and totally live in. They would have their own door, they would go in, they could cook and clean and bathe and do everything that they need to do as a living structure. So the second ordinance would change the living space concept to no dwelling units, but would allow some living space. And I left you with a number of different options for how to address that living space. And that's where the real issue with that proposal is, is what options do you want to use? The first option would be to count that accessory living space toward any living space restrictions that are already on the principal building. If you remember, last year, you adopted a 6,000-square-foot limit on, on living space in, in single-family residences. That would mean that if you had a 4,000-square-foot home, and that you could have a living space above an accessory structure that was up to 2,000. Of course, you could also, essentially what this comes down to is there's 1,000 different ways to skin the cat, and none of them are that much better than any other, but even in that case, you could put a limitation on the maximum. You could say something like, you can have the rest of your 6,000, but it can only be a percentage of the, of what your square footage of your house is, or it can only match the footprint of the structure, or it could be some number that's a maximum. Similarly, you could decide not to count it towards that square footage, and those same considerations could be applied to how you determine what living space could be in the accessory structure. You could have a certain square footage or a specific percentage of the living space restrictions for the principal building. You can have a percentage of the lot coverage or a footprint associated with the accessory structure. You could have a percentage of the living space at the principal building, or you could have some combination of those, or some consideration of the lesser of this, this, or this in those considerations. And that part was, that's the part that somebody needs to decide from a policy perspective rather than me. But it's easy enough to draft if, if the policy's decided. I could have drafted eight or nine different versions of it for you, but I, I think the concept tonight was to think about what the policy would be so that we could avoid having too many drafts in front of you. It also, just as an aside, in that version of the ordinance, addresses accessory structures in the, in the flood protection ordinance as well, and essentially says that if they are allowed by the, if living space is allowed by the zoning ordinance, then it's allowed by the flood ordinance as long as the space is located above the regulatory flood protection elevation.
Council, what's your pleasure? Anybody have thoughts about this or they'd like to share with us?
Yeah, I got a question. Doesn't the Code Right contract we have, does it cover accessory buildings, or are they coming back with any information on accessory buildings? I mean, I guess, I guess what kind of concerns me, the last meeting and this meeting, we're talking about accessory buildings, why is this all of a sudden coming up?
We, the Code Right tasking does include this as part of its module. This, this was the direction from the council for staff to address this particular issue ahead of everything else, and so that's what the town attorney has done.
When?
The last two meetings, it came up.
But what brought it up, and I mean, why did it come up now?
This came up as ancillary discussion with the drive to fix the problem that came before you two meetings ago about unper, excuse me, unpermitted situations in the town. And your, the council discussion evolved then around sending this to, bringing it back to you, some options back to you.
It did.
And that's what, that's what the town attorney has done.
Cause.
No, Ben's done what we asked him to do, I agree. But I guess what we're trying to do is go back further and see what's really, what's really, what's the impetus for this?
Well, I think the impetus on this was the, what came before you last meeting, what you took action on.
No, I understand that, but I'm talking about the topic as, as a whole. Why ancillary, I mean, accessory buildings all of a sudden a real topic of interest when we got a Code Right effort going on and we haven't, we haven't had the opportunity to see what they're recommending?
I can't answer that. I think y'all, we're just doing what y'all directed the staff to do.
And I mean, I think if you want to go back, it came up, it came up in January.
Yes.
Cause I was going to say, this, we didn't bring this up.
No.
That I'm aware of.
No. It's been discussed at multiple meetings, and I'll repeat what brought this up. What brought this up was, I believe it was Martin, Martin coming in to get an application for a structure for living space in a structure that was an accessory structure in January. And when Mr. Haskett looked at that application, he looked at the ordinance and had a question about whether habitable space and living, living space and dwelling units and how they interacted, and asked for an opinion from me about whether or not living space was allowed in accessory structures. And I pined on it and determined that it was not, under the current code. And what that put into play was that over time, how long, Wes? 15 or 20 years?
Comments at least in the late eighties.
Okay. So there have been permits issued over time where there was living space allowed in accessory structures.
In violation of our code.
Yes.
Cause the, the bottom line is, the way I look at it is, at the last meeting, we voted to make something legal, legal.
No, you made, you voted to make something illegal.
No. They were permitted, they had building permits applied for and received, they had certificates of occupancy, applied for and received, they're legal structures.
Well, under the law, they would be illegal structures.
Under the, under the code, they're illegal structures.
And under, and under the law, they would be illegal.
But our, I'm just looking at it from the point that somebody gave them permits.
That's pretty clear, yes, sir.
Okay. When the town gives you a permit, and the town gives you a certificate of occupancy, they, you know, I, I defer to them to tell me what I can and can't do.
And as a lawyer, I would tell you, that's a mistake. The, the law would actually allow, allows the town to make mistakes, and allows the town to come back and enforce its ordinances, even if it makes mistakes. And the reason the law allows that to occur is because otherwise, there is always the potential for corruption. If, if an official of the town could approve permits for their friends, and then no one could later come back and fix it, then the law would have a big problem. So the law has adopted the situation where anytime a government mistakenly, or intentionally, or corruptly, or however it decides to issue a permit that's illegal, it can come back and say, I'm sorry, but it's illegal, and we are now enforcing it. So what happened was, it came to the staff's attention that there were illegal structures in the town that nobody had any complaints about, and that those structures, the proposal at the last meeting that you voted on and essentially agreed with that was that those structures should be legal, because nobody was complaining about it. They were not something that were a problem in the town. However, they were, at the time, illegal and subject to potential enforcement, and staff was going to have to make a decision about whether or not to enforce that. And if they came to me, I'd tell them that if something came up, somebody came in for a permit, and they had a non-conforming, illegally non-conforming structure, that they might not be able to get that permit, and that they, that staff might actually need to take prospective action and enforce and make people change their structures. That is not usually the desired process, particularly where it's clear that over time, it was a mistake that was made by whatever planning and zoning and building inspection officials existed in the town. But the thing that's been clear when we've discussed this every time is that this is a complicated, an unnecessarily complicated area for planning and building inspection folks to deal with, primarily because the building code defines it somewhat differently. And it thinks of living space a lot more like a dwelling unit. And I think that the initial concept behind the no living space and accessory structures was meant to probably be and to preclude dwelling units, not just simple conditioned space. But the way it's worded, it would apply to simple conditioned space without regard to whether or not it met the definition of dwelling unit. So that's why, that's why nobody had any real complaints about the ones that were permitted, and that's why the proposal that, the second proposal that I provided tonight would clear it up to say no dwelling units, but would lead in the concept of accessory structures with living space if the council desires to expand the current code to allow that. But it's clear that over time, there was a mistake in this area, and whose mistake it was, I don't know. But they were not legally permitted. They were permitted, and someone had a permit, but that doesn't mean that they were legal.
Thank you, Ben. Council, what's your pleasure? You want, you want to? You want to address this tonight or send it back to the planning board and get their recommendation?
I think we should follow what we talked about before and at least give them some guidance and have a discussion about it. It doesn't hurt. We've got it here, we've discussed the history of it.
That's fine.
It's not to say we have to come up with a resolution tonight. And I like Ben's workflow of going to the planning board. But it does help to have some direction for them because, I mean, they might come up with something totally different. And if we give them some rough ideas, then they can work out the language and come back to us with something that might actually happen. Otherwise, we get five more options, just like we're talking about here. So I would say, let's have the discussion. Hear what everybody says.
What would you recommend?
Well, I mean, I wasn't in favor of the 6,000 square feet. I'm not in favor of, it wasn't something that I voted for, but I understand the impetus. But I would be in favor of allowing folks to have living space that is not connected to their principal dwelling unit. You know, and with the caveat that it wasn't dwelling space. And that may be, I think the dwelling space is a bigger question. That might come up later. We had a fellow come in and he wanted his son to move down and live down here. I think that's a separate discussion. I'd rather not get into that at this point. But I have no problem with folks having a cabana. What if you had a garage with antique cars? And all you want to do is put an air conditioner in there to heat and cool it. What if you have tools? I mean, I see that all the time. Everything rusts down here, even in garages. As soon as you put an air conditioning unit in there, that all of a sudden becomes living space because it's conditioned, it's heated. Similar, if somebody wants an art studio or a small office or something that is not literally detached or attached to the structure, you know, I don't see any harm in that. And if folks abuse it or do things to make it into a dwelling unit, then they're clearly in violation. And then it's actionable. And I think any clarity, not just for builders, but for homeowners and people who want to develop their properties, I think is good. So I would encourage, let's come up with a plan of attack so that Wes can actually direct people more clearly. That's my two cents.
So you're looking primarily to the second?
I thought that was fair, yes.
But which of those options on the second point that you think would be more appropriate?
Currituck does it where they say that you, they don't have an overall size limit, but they say an accessory structure can't be more than 25% of the primary structure. And that seemed fair. Now, if it were up to me, I would exclude it from the 6,000 square feet. But if it's something where we could get all of us to agree and include it in the 6,000, then I'd be willing to go with that. But Currituck, as an example, would say you can build a house of six, five, in their case, usually they're about 5,000 square feet where they're located, and then you could build 20% or 25% of that. But if we have the 6,000 square feet and that's what we can all agree on, and I asked this question when we had the 6,000 square foot discussion, if you remember, I said, "If they do an accessory structure, would it be included?" And I think we did say it would be. So I'll stick by that if we can get agreement.
You're saying 4,000 square foot home and then up to 2,000 square foot accessory structure would be okay with you?
Yeah, I could live with that. It wouldn't be my first choice, but if we--
As long as it does not exceed the permitted lot coverage of that lot.
If they don't meet lot coverage, they don't meet all the other rules, it doesn't matter.
I understand that.
Why would we restrict the planning board on options? I mean, someone may come up with a better option as what's been presented. That could be based on what other communities are doing. You mentioned Currituck, that was a good example. I mean, there may be other communities farther out in the country that are doing some pretty creative things. I mean, why should we limit what they bring back to us? We can give them these options, no doubt. But if they come up with something else, we ought to consider it as well.
I got the impression, Fred, in response to that, that the planning board was looking maybe for some guidance from us before they started just plowing off in 12 different directions.
Well, we're giving them some limited guidance.
Yeah, we are.
But at the same time, why should you limit their capability for looking at other options as well?
What would your preference be if you had a choice? If you had to direct the planning board, what would you?
I would give them what I got, what we have. And I would say, hey, come back with something that you think is doable based on, you know, whatever criteria they have to adhere to, you know, ordinances or whatever. But if they want to suggest something different, then I think that should be presented as well as an additional option.
Are we trying to break--
I just don't like to constrain people's ability to come back with recommendations. That's my point.
Are we looking at two different items there, habitable and living?
It's living and dwelling, living space and dwelling unit. That's the big distinction. Living space, Ben, correct me, could be anything near like a heated garage, cabana. I'm sure there's all sorts of exercise rooms.
I'm thinking about the gentleman that came here two or three meetings ago.
That would be a dwelling unit.
Yeah, that's, and how do we do, can we handle that or does that go down the drain?
Well, I mean, I don't mind addressing that, and personally, I don't mind. But I think it's a bigger issue. And I know, I remember we were on Chickahaw Board, that came up. And it was fairly contentious because Chickahaw interpreted an additional dwelling unit on the property as a multifamily--
Yeah, but I believe that got attached, or is attached.
No, they didn't, they killed--
No, I'm, okay, the one that was around behind you.
Yes, right, kind of--
Okay, I'm thinking of the other--
Yeah.
But that one was attached.
But it was just attached by a deck.
By a deck.
And in the current rules, that would not be allowed, even attached by a deck.
Well, it has to be a cupboard in Chickahaw. Enclosed attachment.
Well, and I guess that's that challenge of kind of what that attachment is. That's the biggest point, I think, of clarification. If we could give some thought to that, because does the accessory structure, can it be a garage? Can it be a room over a garage? Does it have to be attached at all? Or does it have to be attached by a deck? Deck with a roof?
Well, I think what we're talking about is accessory structure is detached.
There's no necessary attachment.
Am I right on that one, Ben?
The definitions in your code currently separated by whether or not it's attached by living space. If it's attached by decks, porches, other sorts of things that are not living space, then it's a separate accessory structure. If it's a garage that's attached by living space, under the code as it exists right now, then it is not a separate structure. It's part of the principal structure.
So essentially, that's their way of essentially not allowing it. Because once the garage is hooked onto the house, it's part of the house. It's not an accessory structure. So what we're talking about is when the garage starts to go apart.
Right.
You know, or whatever that--
Well, it doesn't necessarily, like, the garage in the particular instance I'm bringing up was a person, he was going to have a separate, or was wanting a separate living space. Because his son and family is going to be living in the main structure that he now lives in. He lost his wife back in December, so now he wants to have, you know, a smaller area, but not be in the house with the family.
A mini-house.
Whatever you want to call it.
A tiny house.
It's a tiny house, yeah. I mean, I think that's kind of a thorny issue. I mean, maybe we want to address it as a council, but I would distinguish it from what Ben is saying. And maybe, and I'm not against discussing that. But I wouldn't tie the two together.
I'm just trying to, are we going to split those two, dwelling versus habitable?
Currently, the proposal does. I didn't presume to think that the council was going to be interested in having dwelling units in accessory structures, but that--
I mean, it's a potential we could be facing specifically as family situations in this particular one changed.
You could limit it to by blood relations. I mean, there's ways to do it.
Don't look at me. The attorney's over there.
No, I'm looking at him, I'm not looking at you.
We have control over that. I mean, if we wanted to say, if it's, if somebody by family or by blood wanted an accessory structure like this fellow who came in and he wants to live there while his son lives in the main house, like tiny house, you're exactly right. Is that something that we don't, and then it wouldn't matter whether it's living, habitable, whatever, you know? It's living, dwelling, it's the same. You don't make a distinction. But I'm not sure, do you guys--
I think you've got a whole different can.
Yeah.
And that would be multiple living units on one piece of property, which is restricted in certain areas of our community, I know, by covenants.
Yep.
I won't speak to the SSCA because they've got so many different areas.
Well, they have, that's my block, there's like, there's 99 or more of them.
But they have those covenants also that limit that. Like Chickahaw limits that. You couldn't do that on a lot in Chickahaw. You can build a garage with a space above it, and--
Which they are there.
Which they have there. So, and I thought that's what we were talking about. I would suggest, my recommendation would be, we send these to the planning board for review. The only thing I would say is that if it's gonna be a living space, it needs to come under the 6,000 square feet for their review to look at and add to and give us any other option that they want to. And looking at the code rewrite, there should be some options in there. I know I looked at one section that we're gonna have come up, and there was A through H, I think, as far as suggestions of how to handle a certain area. And I think it's, you know, they can come to us. We've got builders and we've got some good minds on that planning board that can bring some good suggestions back to us. I think Ben did a good job putting this together. And if they need us to, or one or so of us to come and sit in and listen and have them ask us questions, I'm, you know, I'd be more than wrong.
I prefer to let it go back and we can get some more information of it right now.
But when we open that door about multiple living spaces on one lot, I have concerns on that.
Yeah, but I think we're gonna see more of it. Because a couple of things is happening with families. One, they either go to children or saying, "I want you closer to me" so they'll move, or in the instance that I'm aware of, the family's moving here to keep an eye on Dad. So, you know, and our population's not getting younger.
Well, and, you know--
Now frankly, I don't have room for it.
And on the other side of that, children don't go away when they're 18 or 19 anymore. They stay at home for a long time. I mean, you know, you've got guys that go to college and can't find jobs well enough to move away, and they stay with parents or what have you. So there's a lot of different living situations. I agree with you, Leo. So, you know, it's something for us to look at, but--
I think it's something we're gonna be seeing or hearing more and more of. And we might as well address it now as later.
But if it's, you know, if somebody's got two bedrooms above a garage and that's what they want to put there, I don't have a problem with that as long as it comes under and it's conditioned, if it's within the 6,000 square feet.
Are you good with two bedrooms over the garage?
No, I'm just saying, I don't have a problem with it if it's--
If it's under the, 6,000, you're making limit.
If it's within the limit.
Well, within the total six, plus a lot coverage will limit there too.
It meets the setbacks and--
All the other applications have to be met.
Yeah.
So I'd recommend we send this to the planning board, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Wes, you work the planning board very closely, continuously. Would you like to see more guidance than that? Or are you okay with what we're talking about? Thank you. Yes, Peter?
If that is the formation of a motion, I just want to make sure we were clear here. So the tendency would be that if they considered a recommendation back to you for an accessory, detached accessory structure, then that's fine as long as the aggregate living space of that in the primary is limited to the 6,000 square feet. I want to make sure we understood that.
Is that basically what your motion is saying?
The aggregate of both is limited to 6,000 square feet.
You're okay with it in concepts, as long as it's under 6,000, is that?
Right. Does not exceed or under--
Does not exceed six.
In an effort to clarify, I'd agree, because I think it's a step forward.
Do we need a motion on that?
But, you know, they're gonna bring it back to us for approval, and we can make changes as needed.
Do we even need a motion?
No.
I don't see anybody who's disagreeing. You don't have to have one, particularly where you're not making a real, you know, maybe more complicated to make a motion.
We'll just record a consensus to forward it on to, forward both of them to the planning board with those comments.
Yes, yes. Hey, counsel, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a consensus. We're gonna do just that. Item C, clarify or affirm, Council's 2717, directing continuing design of a five-foot walkway along South Dogwood Trail. Peter, would you address that for us?
Yes, this is a request from staff to council tonight. At your last meeting, you discussed, you actually directed staff to submit a grant application for the East Dogwood Trail walkway that had been designed. And recall that back in February, the council directed that the entire length, both south and east, be designed. I wanted to report to you, that's about a 1.4-mile section is the South Dogwood Trail. And the engineer has not started on that piece, or has started, but not developed significantly yet. But I just wanted to make sure we got what the council felt about continuing with that design at this point. I got the feeling when hearing your discussion last time is that you wanted to center on the East Dogwood Trail grant application, and that's what we're doing. Do you want us to, staff to continue with design of the South Dogwood Trail portion, or suspend that at this time? I will say on a comment that it will not look like the East Dogwood Trail. There will be many trees that will be marked to be removed, and there will be many structures in the steep topography there that would accommodate a trail on the east side of the street. So it wouldn't look anything like this one if we wanted to proceed with that. We just need direction as to whether to continue on with that, or do you want to suspend that until East Dogwood Trail is considered once a grant application is ruled on, I guess.
The grant applications, ain't this for the East Dogwood portion?
Yes, yes, sir.
I know that, from my observation, and on the South Dogwood side, that it's gonna be, there's a lot of work has to be done there, number one. Number two, it's not gonna be follow the bulkhead-ing and what have you might have to take place. My opinion is we ought to suspend it for the time being because what we maybe decide to do with that road.
Just follow up what Leo said. I have been advocating for, for three and a half years that we look, and we kept South Dogwood on our CIP, our original CIP list, the way we did because I felt we needed to, very strongly, we needed to look at that street as a total, total package as far as what we're gonna do there, and not just talk about a trail or the street itself, but the whole thing. The street definitely needs attention, definitely needs given considerable amount of attention. And I think we need to address the street itself as an entity and not try to go in there and throw a trail in and destroy a lot of trees. We might not destroy those same trees if we just done something with the road. So my position would be that I would propose to council that we hold any trail design right now in abeyance for South Dogwood to be as how we're gonna do with the street, long-term, and then come back and look at the trail as part of that, as part of that venture, if you will. I appreciate the thoughts, if you have any, for council.
Got mine.
Yes, thank you, Leo. Go ahead, Fred.
I would stop design on the South Dogwood Trail. First of all, I don't like the idea of taking down more trees. And I think the people that are living on South Dogwood Trail are not gonna be very supportive. If you wanna go with East Dogwood, kinda as a trial basis, see how that turns out based on the discussion we had last council meeting, I think there needs to be some redesign there using existing infrastructure. We've, I think Gary and Chris were proponents of using the existing pavement there and marking that as a trail. It would be least impact to the, to the folks on East Dogwood. But I'm not in favor of continuing with South Dogwood Trail pathway at all.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. So...
I would, the only thing I'm gonna add is, and I can, I can live with that, but safety is the issue that we looked at that about, and I would've preferred that we did South Dogwood first, design it, because the safety issue is that street. Once you get to East Dogwood and cross the bridge, there's room to get off the road. I've walked that street several times. And you can get out of the traffic on East Dogwood. South Dogwood, that's a different matter. It's, it's very tight. And I would've preferred, and I thought that's when we did this back in the beginning, that they were gonna bring us a plan that would've been for the whole, the trail for the whole section, both the east and South Dogwood, and that didn't occur. But that would've been my preference, because I think the issue there is, we have a lot of kids live over there, they walk that street, a lot of people walk that street just to get exercise, and as we know, the traffic in the summer is horrendous. And I think we've had some near misses on Saturday mornings. And that would've been my preference. Didn't happen, so I can live with deferring it. But we've put a lot of effort with community members working on the, the task force to put that together, and I know that's why we went ahead with it, was to support what we've done in the past. And I think we need to think seriously about looking at South Dogwood as far as a safety issue pretty soon. That should come up, because it's getting more dangerous every year. Summer's when the kids are out of school, and so they're more active, and they're out there, so we need to think about that.
Yeah, maybe the, the cut through traffic in the summer is probably contributing to that safety factor more than anything.
The good thing is the town moving.
And I think that's, we need to, to look at the root cause rather than, than the symptoms.
Yeah. Are we in agreement, council, that we, are we in agreement, council, that we direct the staff to, to delay or stop the design at this time for the five-foot walkway along South Dogwood Trail?
If I could.
Sure.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with, with both Gary and Ms. Sullivan, both, and I, and I do think we have to look at it, but I, and, and I know Tom and I have discussed this in the past, that you've always had the preference of making the path...
I wanna improve the street.
Improve the street and do the path at the same time. It'll get the pain of the construction, which will be painful, out of the way all at once. So, maybe the, maybe the direction to the town engineer has to just change in that, let's ask him to look at the whole road with the street, and, or the road with the path, so that, let's do, let's do all of that, so that we're able to figure out, yes, there are gonna be trees that are lost. It is, I think to Gary's...
There's gonna be a lot.
To Gary's point, and, and to develop consensus on that's gonna take longer than, clearly, than East Dogwood. So, the reason why East Dogwood was done separately, I imagine, was just because it, no trees would have to be lost. It's a lot easier, but it is much safer than South Dogwood. South Dogwood is dangerous. So, I do think we need to look at it, and I, I'd say, maybe not, maybe the, the direction wouldn't be to stop it. In fact, it's to say, okay, let's get a comprehensive solution to the, the road and the path, so that we can begin to, to put numbers to it, 'cause that's one thing we can't do right now. It's so, it's so intensive, it's a long stretch, there's a lot of topography, that cost per linear foot isn't gonna be some multiplier we can get from the state. We're gonna need some design documents to really get there.
And we're gonna need to work with the, the capital and infrastructure improvement planning committee to, to make that happen.
That's right, it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen right away, but to your point, Fred, the, the side benefit is, if we did the road, it'd be shut down. Do you do it during the summer? So, you know, and it's gonna take some time.
Definitely.
So, maybe we phase it two years over the summer and, and everybody can tap.
Not sustainable.
But I'm just, I'm...
Two or, two or three years.
Well, yeah, two or three years over the summer, just long enough for Google Maps to reroute.
Well, I, I don't, I don't mention the three years. I don't mention the three years to, to necessarily keep people out. I'm just saying that we gotta look at the dollar, the dollar amounts it would cost to do that, too.
No, no, I know, I'm joking.
Okay. Do we need a motion, Peter, or are you okay with?
I did wanna clarify one thing, if you don't mind. The, I wanna make sure, clarify that, East Dogwood Trail was not done separately. It was done as the, his first half of his work, and I, it was my call to have him go ahead and put that in presentable form to, to have, so you would have something during the budget, just give me the capital improvement process time. He could've just not submitted it and done South Dogwood, and we waited another six months and brought the whole package to you. So, I just wanna make sure, that's still an option for council, if you would like for him to continue on, but since we, I made the call for him to bring in what he'd already done, you considered that, that, you know, the last meeting, so... But I, I, if, if everybody's in consensus, we can record a consensus to, to hold in an abeyance or something.
I think that's what we're agreeing on, is it not?
Just in abeyance, I mean, we're not abandoning, we're just delaying it.
We're not abandoning it, we're just, we're delaying it. Is that all right?
Yes.
I prefer to keep going, bud.
Maybe we need to have a...
Well, you wanna, you wanna, I'll make a motion that we, we hold the construction of South Dogwood Trail, walking path, in abeyance or delay it, and as time as we have a better resolution to what we're gonna do with the street itself.
Hold the design.
Can we, can we, can we implement, can we ask the town engineer to look at the design of South Dogwood? Or is that something we're not? I mean, that, that's really what I'm saying, let's have them look at it.
Yeah.
No, he's got a bu- he's got a budget to look at the paths on, on South Dogwood current, and we are, we'll expand the scope, but...
You would expand?
I think that's, I, I didn't hear you, your question, but it sounds like you're getting into the capital improvement part of it.
It is.
I mean, he's prepared to continue with what he was directed to do, to finish that South Dogwood, and bring you a design, and it's gonna show, what y'all been talking about tonight, a lot of trees coming out and a lot of wooden structures. But if you want to do something else with the road improvement, that would be part of capital improvement.
Well, then we would address it, it's capital improvement level.
Yeah. Yeah, let's...
I may be on the short end of the stick here, and that, and that's fine.
I, I don't sense consensus over here, so we need to...
I'm the problem.
What we should probably do is go ahead, and I, I would, I would call for a motion, I would make a motion that we, that we delay the engineering and design of the South Dogwood walking path.
Send it to the capital improvement, I mean, the CIP.
CIP group.
What?
And have the CIP group...
Well, the CIP committee's gonna, CIP committee's gonna determine the, the work on the Dogwood Trail itself.
'Cause I, I'm still of the opinion it's gotta be a total package, not just piecemeal, 'cause there'll be two different disruptions in construction.
Yeah, I agree, okay. Is there any, any further questions about that, or any further?
No, am I?
I need a second to a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Chris, okay, thank you. Thanks, council. Under item six, new business, consider resolution twenty seventeen oh eight oh one, termination of interlocal agreement with Dare County for building inspections effective ten two ti- twenty seventeen. Peter, would you address that for us?
Yes, council, you may recall in budget planning, I've reported to you that the, that our agreement with Dare County, had been looked at by Dare County and their budget planning, and there was a move to increase the cost for the Town of Southern Shores, for our building and fire inspection services that we had under agreement. And at that time, we put in the proposed budget funds, then in case that were to happen, and in case we divested that agreement, that we would be able to hire a part-time building inspector with the current, with the current budget. Since those discussions, the building inspector for Southern Shores, oh, the building inspector who was employed by Dare County and performed that work for Southern Shores, gave notice of retirement. So, we have worked out the arrangement with him to bring him on as a part-time employee starting October third. He will be leaving the county, he cannot work full month, so we will be retaining, proposed to retain the county services up through October second, and then Buddy Shelton will come on as our part-time building and fire inspector on October third. The arrangement we had with the county, the, the agreement, interlocal agreement, to, to be terminated requires your action for, to enact a resolution, calling for me to give them notice, sixty days' notice, and that's what I'm recommending for you tonight. We would pick up Mr. Shelton as a full, part-time employee, he would be working here three days a week, beginning in October, and that would be the upside of that arrangement.
Understood, thank you. So, council, I need a resolution, I need a motion, I'm sorry, to adopt resolution...
I have a question, Tom.
Yeah, go ahead.
Peter, how's that help us? I mean, if we stay with the county, they'll hire a new inspector, right?
They've already hired some new inspectors.
Right.
Two of them are in training, one is, is certified. It would help us in the sense that Mr. Shelton is, is, is a veteran inspector for the county. He will be here a dedicated twenty hours a week, as opposed to possibly eight, possibly twelve, possibly fourteen. As we have a stronger call for inspection services, we do need someone who's here and reliable, and, and that's the upside of it, is what, is what I would recommend. But it also does not put us at the pleasure of the county to increase the cost on a whim, and that's what, that was, the threat was in the spring. We'd reach that point.
What will the cost difference be?
About eight thousand dollars.
A year?
Yes, sir.
Is that eight thousand dollars if we stay with the county, or what?
That's eight thousand dollar difference, that it costs us more if we, as we go through this process, for now.
That's at the current rate, Peter, also, not the increased rate that the county was wanting to do.
That's, that's right, that's at the current, where the county was talking about increasing its rate from around sixteen, eighteen thousand dollars up to thirty thousand dollars.
So, there's a potential savings of eight thousand?
Potential, if the county, this, this takes us out of that situation where the county could say, we want to start charging you more.
I guess my thought process is long-term. When Mr. Shelton's retiring, who I'm, I don't know, but he's retiring, so therefore I'm, I'm assuming he's up in age. When he retires from us, would we be looking at going back to the county, or how would we work that? I mean, that's, I'm thinking...
We, we would have to, have to attack that when it occurs. I would either seek to propose to you that we keep an employee, or we go back to a, in a local agreement, either with Dare or Currituck County. We actually explored it with Currituck as well. So, it all, it's, the problem is, there are not that many certified building inspectors in the northeast, and that's what everybody is encountering right now.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, are you required to announce this position so other people could apply that are certified?
On a part-time, this would be a, they're a part-time employee, and that's, that's the way we did it this time. We just went on and negotiated with him to come on as a part-time employee. That, that's, that's my recommendation to the council, to give notice to him, and we pick up the part-time in October third.
I, I've known Buddy for years, and he's, he's one of the best.
No, I'm not questioning his capabilities, I'm just saying, the process is what I'm concerned about. I don't want somebody coming back complaining to us that, hey, we would love to do that job, you didn't give me a chance.
Well, and I, and, and it, I think it's a bit of a free-for-all with the inspectors in the different towns now, they're all hopping seats. So, I, I, if we don't, if we don't keep him here, somebody else is gonna, gonna grab him, and I'd be ashamed. He's got that sense of, you know, that continuity, he's fairly important.
Continuity, I think he's well-respected in the builder community, by the builders themselves.
No, I, I'm not questioning that, I'm, I was just questioning the process.
Council, I need a motion to, to accept resolution number twenty seventeen oh eight oh one, and, and pass it on, so, so our town manager can act accordingly. Do I get a motion to that effect?
Is that a motion, or some?
Show move.
Yeah, motion.
Did you make the motion, or did you make the motion, and you're looking for a second?
He, he made the motion.
I'll, I'll second it, though.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving resolution twenty seventeen oh eight oh one, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion's made and carried to accept resolution twenty seventeen oh eight oh one. Thank you. This time, we're gonna consider a request from Dominion Energy, North Carolina, for easement along Town Street right-ofways for Dominion Energy reliability project. Jason Hathcock from Dominion Energy is now gonna speak to us, I think. Hi, Jason.
Hello.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Mr. Jay Tutwiler is here as well, with Dominion.
Hi, Jay. I recognize you back there.
Wanted to bring to your attention that Dominion's proposing doing some major improvements in the Southern Shores area. As most of you probably already know, we've got a lot of overhead, old facilities along the canals in Southern Shores. And what they would like to do over a five-to-ten-year process is start to build infrastructure to allow us to eliminate a lot of that overhead power lines that are running along the canals. The infrastructure plan would also give us better reliability, give us capability to do switching and loop the underground infrastructure in, in Southern Shores. In order to do that, we're gonna need to do some major improvements in the existing underground that we have there. We'll need to obtain new right-ofway from private property owners in Southern Shores, as well as the Town of Southern Shores. That's why we're here to speak with you this evening, is to let you know what we hope to do, and let you know that we're gonna require right-ofway from the Town of Southern Shores. We've presented the easement to Mr. Hobbs and, and Mr. Rasko. We're, they're currently looking at it, and we're pretty close to coming to a resolution on, on the easement itself. I wanted to make myself available to answer any questions, and if I can't answer them, Jay Tutwiler will probably have the answers for you. Do you all have questions about what we're looking to achieve?
This is taking existing overhead and putting it underground, is that what I understand?
That's correct. We're looking, all, all new power lines that would be going in would be underground. You would see some, some above-ground infrastructure, which would be pad-mounted transformers, switches, possibly pedestals, which are small splice boxes.
So, that's basically over in the Dogwood, in that wooded areas that we're, we're looking at here, I see?
Well, we would be bringing lines in along Beech Tree, along Dogwood Trail, Hill Crest, Hickory Trail, it's, it's... But basically, the effort is to basically eliminate the overhead lines that, that travel along the canal areas.
Yeah, 'cause I, I know those people have been wanting it underground for some time, I believe.
And we do, too. It, it's very difficult to service, especially when the trees take it out and leave it in the canals, we have to figure out how to get the lines back up and get poles in, so basically converting everything to underground back there is our plan, but it's gonna take some, take some legwork up front in order to do that, and it's gonna take probably five to ten years. It'll be done in several phases. But we wanted to go ahead and, and start working on it, so we can start rolling out the projects in twenty eighteen. so that we can start rolling out the projects in 2018.
Okay.
So, I've, I can leave with you all, or I could email it to you, the, the design plan showing you where all the improvements will be made.
Peter, is that what we've got in our book now, some of that?
Yeah, you've got in your book, you've also, the clerk has given you an Exhibit A, this entitled "Right-ofway Agreement," and this is what, in the last day, the town attorney, Mr. Hobbs, has negotiated with the right-ofway agent for Dominion, and he recommends, he's able to recommend this to you, the terms on this Exhibit A. If you don't wanna get bogged down in the wordage of it, you can certainly, if you want to agree to do something, make it contingent on Mr. Hobbs continuing to protect the town's interest through this document, but this is what he's willing, Mr. Hobbs has indicated he would recommend to the council.
He's just saying one agreement instead of having to go through and do five?
No, this would be attached to the actual easement agreement itself, and that would be modified to be commensurate with this right-ofway agreement.
Yep, I have a question. This is all underground cabling that you're planning to do. In other words, you're taking the over, existing overheads and putting them underground, is that correct?
The first part of the, Phase 1 would be actually bringing in new underground, and yes, it will all be underground.
Okay.
But in order to facilitate removing the overhead facilities, we're gonna need to go ahead and get the underground in and start creating loops.
Right.
And, and bringing in additional infrastructure, such as switches, transformers, and pedestals in order to do that. But we have to bring in the underground before we can take out the overhead.
Sure, I understand. How much of a disruption to the environment are you going to be doing?
Basically, everything that we'd be installing would be installed by a guide drill, and so where the drill enters the ground, of course, you'll have the mud that comes along with that. So, it would be some disturbance, we would make our best attempt to restore it back to exactly how it were, how it was before we started.
Right.
We've worked with other communities down here, if there's any discrepancy between how it was when we came in and how it was when we finished, we'll make sure it's, it's back to normal.
Okay. Reason I ask you that, there are some provisions in the agreement that, that we received that you could actually go in and clear-cut right-ofway if you, if you felt like you needed to, but it doesn't sound like that's in your plan to do that.
It's definitely not our plan to do that. We may have to do some clearing when we're gonna put in transformers.
Right.
But they, you know, they're about three and a half feet, about three and a half feet.
And they're small.
I think what you were reading was basically more intended towards an overhead installation, and we're not seeking overhead easements in this particular case.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Just as an added, this, this project is Phase 1, as Jason said, it's a five-to-10-year composite project. You may recall, last year, we entered, had a new circuit out of our Kitty Hawk substation that streamlines north on 158, and dead ends at a switch over here in front of Ride 8. That set the stage for this to happen. It's referred to as a load relief project for us. It actually enables us to have some more infrastructure that we can do some switching, looping, and so forth. And the second phase of this is really gonna start looking at that overhead line along north Dogwood Trail in the canals. That's when you're gonna start to see some of the overhead facilities being taken out, similar to what we did many years ago along the sound, we took the line out of the sound and redirected the feeds to those customers. This is kind of the same, same project, but a longer span, 'cause there's a lot of things that'll have to be done in the future, but this, like I say, is the critical first stage, to get the underground infrastructure, you know, put in to make all the other projects a reality.
Great.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
I would make a motion that we, you understand we're a tree-friendly community, right? With that, said that we enter into an agreement with Dominion Power.
We can assure you, no tree will be taken down without some discussion, and we don't anticipate taking any trees down. We will have to do a little bit of clearing, as Jason indicated, but again, individual property owners will be, this will be discussed with, as well as the town of Southern Shores, and we're in your right-ofway.
I got a motion on the floor, council, to, to accept their, their proposal, proposal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Peter?
Yes, you may.
So, I had been, Robert was out of town, and is unreachable, but my understanding is that the Exhibit A that you have here, I saw his emails to Dominion, that he said he would approve this right-ofway agreement with this Exhibit A if they made the changes that he had, and I see they're in here.
That's right.
Are y'all okay? These changes that we made, or changes that Tracy made, came back to Mr. Hobbs?
I, I think they worked in, you know, to make that happen, and we received a copy of that today, indicating that it was approved, so.
So, the motion, Peter, would be to approve this right-ofway agreement as in the agenda packet, along with the Exhibit A?
Right.
That it was provided, that includes Mr. Hobbs' request of changes that they've agreed to.
You want to amend your motion to that?
That's what I said.
You didn't have Exhibit A, I don't think.
Yes, I do, I have it right here.
You got, that's fine. Everybody understand?
Is that good, Ben?
Yeah, I understood it.
So, let's have a second, second, just make sure you all got it.
I'll second.
All right, that's fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Motion's made and carried to accept that agreement. Item C, Budget Amendments, Project Approved, Budgeted, and Contractually Encumbered, Money Not Spent. Peter, you wanna address that one for us?
Yes, please, the council, I'll talk about Budget Amendment Number 4 and Budget Amendment Number 5, and I mentioned these last month at your meeting, that we would be bringing these as well, and these are two balancing budget amendments from the previous budget year. Again, this is for funds that were obligated in the previous fiscal year, but which were either not spent, or the materials did not arrive, or the contract was not fulfilled during that particular fiscal year, and so the funds diverted, of course, midnight June 30th, and now we're fulfilling those obligations and coming to you for Budget Amendment so that they can be put back in. The first one, Number 4, is for funds that were remaining for the NC-12 Dogwood Trail Stormwater Project. These are for lights, and also, there is landscaping money in this as well. So, that is $14,936 that was obligated in FY 16, 17, and now we need to roll that back in to fulfill the obligations, to finish the project. Budget Amendment Number 5 is for a police grant, funding that for training equipment that was obligated for in the previous fiscal year. They did not come in, so that money did not, was not spent in that fiscal year, and now we're just pulling, recommending that this be pulled back out from, to fulfill that obligation from the previous FY. I will say before you consider these, that there is a third that will come to you next month, that will be for the project that you approved for the beach survey in November, December. Those funds are only partially spent, of course, that's an obligated project, and we need to roll that as well. So, that's not on this agenda, but that'll be on the next agenda. So, I rec, this, Number 4 and Budget Amendment Number 5 are recommended to the council tonight.
Do you wanna address those as, as both of them at the same time, or you wanna address, have me, have me address them separately?
Mr. Town Attorney, if you, I don't care, both of them need to be passed.
Counsel? I'm sorry.
I don't think it matters whether you, when that matters is when there's gonna be a different answer.
I have a question, Peter. The street light, is that the lights like we have now?
Yes.
Those solar?
Exactly, the same as the ones.
Do we have, there's an intersection before you get to East Dogwood, is that one going to be lighted?
That's the one, that's in this project.
Okay, so those two, that intersection and that other intersection are gonna be?
Well, the intersection itself would not, cannot be lighted.
East Dogwood?
Yeah, the one with the stoplights. DOT won't allow that to be lighted, because it's already in their mind.
Okay, that's the one before.
So, the next one down is the one that...
Okay. One at Dolphin, is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
I can, I'd motion that we prove both of these.
Prove both of these.
I second it.
Any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's made and carried to accept both these budget amendments, Numbers 4 and 5. Before I ask our town manager and our town attorney and our police chief to, to give us their recommendations and their observations as relative to our summer traffic issue, I remind everyone, this is not something new. We've been, we've been talking about this for at least 10 years, maybe longer. In fact, Citizen Concern goes back to early 2000s, since I first moved here. The past few years, there's been much discussion about closing South Dogwood incoming traffic at the 158 intersection on Saturdays and Sundays for a number of weeks during the summer. I've heard other alternatives, and we heard some tonight, about like changing the light cycle, things of that sort. I first discussed this with Mr. Jennings, Jerry Jennings, about almost three, oh, over three years ago now. He was not supportive of, of not allowing a left turn there, and he gave me a number of what he called pros and cons, and there weren't very many pros, it was reduce the amount of traffic on South Dogwood, but the, but the negatives would be that people are gonna go to the very first place they can find to make a U-turn and come back, they'll go to the shopping center and turn around and come back, they'll go to Juniper Trail and go left anyway, or go on around the corner on Highway 12 and turn left on whatever, Porpoise or Dolphin, or one of those streets. They'll find some way to avoid having to not get their, their little chance to run through Southern Shores on their way to, to Currituck. He believed the traffic would simply move to the next available intersection, but he's more concerned about the accident potential with people making an illegal U-turn, especially later in the day when the traffic's not so thick coming out. I was also told over three years ago that the mayor of Kitty Hawk simply said he would not help with the enforcement of the, of that left turn restriction, even though it's in his, in his jurisdiction, because he didn't have the resources, didn't have the people or the money to do it. So, that kind of laid dormant for a couple of years, and now it's come back, and within the last week or so, two weeks, I've had a couple of conversations with Alan Moran, who's our new District 1 representative to the, to the NC DOT, and Alan has consulted with Mr. Jennings once again, and come back to me another time, and said he still doesn't feel any more comfortable with the idea of a no-left turn restriction on, on highway, on Dogwood Trail at the 158 intersection. There's been no commitment to me that they would help us with the signage or control devices for that, for that intersection, should we decide we wanna try to, to experiment with that. The Kitty Hawk mayor has advised me that they would not object to Southern Shores assuming the enforcement and control measures, if, if we could, if we wanted to take that on, as long as we assume all costs and, and indemnify Kitty Hawk Town from any legal action that might come about because of that, what we're doing. So, this time, I'll, that's kind of where I am with this, and, and I've made it very clear to Mr. Jennings before, and to Mr., to Alan, when I talked to him recently, that I'm not calling him as an advocate or not advocate, but I'm just asking for their opinion and get their thoughts. And I think I made it clear to him that I was just trying to bring, bring something back to our, to our residents and our citizens. So, at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to our town manager, ask for his follow-up. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This staff report has been placed on the town website, is available for the public to look at. We were directed to come up with some concrete options that would deter traffic on all streets of the town, and we interpreted that to mean, we interpreted that to mean options that would have an immediate and concrete effect, not just ones that had been, might do something, or ones that had been tried in the past and were unsuccessful. And, of course, we did discuss the fact that I thought that we were gonna probably come up with options that you had all heard before, and I think that's true. So, there are basically three options that we addressed, and we put in this list, and I'll go through fairly quickly, and also comment on the cost for those, and then the chief is going to comment on actual traffic numbers that have occurred this summer. The, the first option that, that we have listed is the no-left turn that the mayor just spoke about on US 158, eastbound into South Dogwood Trail. And basically, we commented on the history of the idea. I wasn't quite aware of everything that you mentioned tonight, Mr. Mayor, but you have told me that, and in the report, it talks about the fact that DOT has not been amenable to that in the past, neither has the town of Kitty Hawk. However, if, if they were, through political persuasion, to grant that idea, what I understand from DOT is that Southern Shores would be required to come up with the traffic devices, and we would have to place those traffic devices to do away with that left turn lane that's westbound, you couldn't just switch the light off, or, or switch a no-light for no-left turn. They would require that left turn lane to be totally blocked. They would also require all traffic to be restricted in a no-left turn. So, whatever hours are settled on, be it 8:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon, there would be absolutely no left turn traffic at that intersection, as, as DOT would mandate us if we implemented that. Town of Kitty Hawk would have to agree, and we would have a memorandum of agreement with Town of Kitty Hawk on actual enforcement, as well as, of course, any responsibilities and liabilities that would be insisted upon. The next consideration in that is that, as DOT aptly told us, once you do that, the GPS apps are gonna direct the traffic to make a left turn at the very next available left turn, and that would be Juniper Trail. Between Juniper Trail and South Dogwood, there would be some false left turns that would gain traffic as well, i.e. Duckwood Drive and also the shopping center. But DOT's traffic engineers says, they, they say, and I agree, that the traffic would immediately be diverted to turn left at the next stoplight. So, this report talks about cost in making that a no-left turn. Once that happens, then there's the situation where you have other streets along NC-12 where people could still turn left to try to gain access to Seots and Wax Myrtle, and other streets to drive to the west, parallel with NC-12, to get around traffic on 12. And all that would be dictated by the GPS apps, 90% of it would be dictated by that, turn left and get on a clean street and zoom to the north. So, all those streets would presumably have to be addressed if you wanted to have an effect on traffic with a simple no-left turn mechanism. The second option was akin to what the Dogwood Trails Task Force had recommended. It is to block a bridge or a street so that no traffic can go from one side of that street to the other side of that street. And the two logical places in town where it would have an effect would be the Dick White Bridge and the culvert over Juniper Trail. The option would be to block those so that you would have to stop at the barricade, either if you were northbound or eastbound, or you would have to stop at the barricade if you were southbound or westbound, and turn around and go out. It would not shut the street down, so the street would still be technically open, but there would be a barricade, so that definitely would stop traffic. And the GPS, and talking to traffic engineers, the GPS apps would pick up on that eventually in a very short period of time, and take those streets off the system if they were clearly blocked, so you could not drive from US 158 to NC-12. So, that would be a barricade at East Dogwood Trail and a barricade at Juniper, and that would block those two streets, and there would be no through traffic coming through there. There would be cost in that, as far as not only the infrastructure, but obviously, that's not gonna make a lot of people happy, you're gonna have the situation, do emergency vehicles get, travel through or not? If so, it's gonna have to be manned. So, there would be manning, cost to man that as well, just like we put in for the lot, for the no-left turn, I'll go through in a minute, there would be cost involved in that as well. I'll go through in a minute. There would be cost involved in that as well. The third option that would have an immediate effect to deter traffic would be to actually create the gated community. I think everybody's talked about that in some different ways over the years. Some people have not talked about it, and it's been an elephant in the room sometimes when we've had forums. But that would prevent traffic from entering the town of Southern Shore Streets and from exiting town of Southern Shore Streets. That would be the most costly, obviously. There would be ten different ways in and ten different ways, or ten different ways in and out of town. We would have to acquire infrastructure to gate those. And previous to all this, of course, there would be a legal process. There would be legal cost in doing the option two and option number three, to take these streets out of the public realm, basically, so the public can't travel on them. But in the gated community, there would have to be gates at each of the ten spots, and they would have to be manned to make it effective. Otherwise, you're going to have people coming in and out. If they're not manned, we still have the problem of service vehicles, emergency vehicles, and guests, which make up a large part of the economy for our occupancy tax. So they would have to be able to access these gates as well somehow. So that would be creating a gated community of the ten entrance ways, and that would prevent traffic from coming in and out. In that third option is also mentioned the option that was discussed back in 2009 with the town council at that time, is to create an ordinance that would prohibit a vehicle from traveling from US 158 through the town of Southern Shores just to get to NC 12 and travel north without stopping. That was discussed as attached to this report back in 2009 as being impractical and unenforceable because you couldn't show, the problem is you can't show intent. Somebody can always say they're just going up to the house on the corner. They're just going around the block. They're going to another street. So that's why we mentioned that ordinance in here. That was discussed by the council back in 2009. And I think the town attorney is ready to comment on these in your questions, but that's certainly something that we talked about, but it's not practical. I did want to mention as well, I did mention that each one of these has a legal cost to it and a legal process. It also has the ramifications that if streets are taken off the public system, in other words, they're not available for the general public to drive on at any time, then they come off what we call the pile bill system. And the town does not get reimbursed for maintenance, repair, and construction of that other street during the next year. Currently, we have $119,000 budgeted for revenue for this year for pile bill money. Just wanted to mention that. The staff report also talks about other options that have been discussed in the past. Signage, speed bumps, humps, lumps, roundabouts, et cetera, that I think the chief will speak to, and he'll be glad to answer questions on those, as how they are ineffective in preventing a car who is zoomed in on a GPS, or maybe not, is just following cars, who comes across that bridge and wants to make a left turn and does make a left turn. He's stuck. He's in the system. He's going straight ahead, and he's going to go to the other side of town, no matter what. So those are the three options that we presented. The option one, the no-left turn, is again, just to recap, it would presumably require no-left turns and all the other left turns that we talked in the town to prevent GPS from immediately diverting traffic to those turns. The cost would be manpower for two policemen, two law enforcement officers at each of those no-left turns during the restricted time to prevent no-left turns and to enforce it. It would also, so that two for each intersection is what the chief has proposed. And also, there would be two public works workers who would have to come in, and all this would be on overtime, if we have enough manpower to do overtime. We would have to have two public works workers who would pick up, put down and pick up at the direction of DOT the traffic devices that would restrict the no-left turn. The cost, if you, if we, if the town decided it wanted to man each one of the ten entrance ways, it would require fourteen officers. It would require, and I think the chief will speak to that in a minute, it would require, the preference is that there would be uniformed law enforcement officers employed by the town of Southern Shores. Otherwise, we would have an administration and oversight challenge for anything, anybody who's not uniformed or sworn. That would be roughly about a million and a half dollars in manpower cost. The infrastructure cost, we are estimating probably it's around a million dollars, if not more, to put those type gates up, if you wanted, if we wanted to do it at ten different intersections. Some of them have multiple entrance ways. If just the Dogwood Trail, South Dogwood Trail was done, of course, that would be two law enforcement officers and two public works directors. So it's a math, a math situation then to reduce it down. But again, we don't see how you can do a no-left turn at South Dogwood without having to immediately do one at the other sites. Public works cost would be, if we had enough people to, that could engage in overtime, that would be about $20,000 a season for two of them for twelve weekends, assuming it's a twelve-weekend function. Again, do not know if we have enough officers or enough public works slots to actually do overtime. Also, we would have to acquire the cost of the devices, assuming DOT would not do that. And we would have to acquire the signage if DOT did not do that. I just, we haven't gotten that far, depending on what your direction is, if you want to take this further, that option further. And of course, there is legal, there are legal costs involved in each of the options, the options two and three especially, if these public streets are taken off the system. There's always the chance that a citizen could claim a vested right in being able to drive on our town streets over the decades. So I do want to recognize Chief Cole and ask him if he would go through the traffic numbers, and then the town attorney could answer the legal liability questions and the process questions on any of these three options as well. Chief, if you could come in.
Good afternoon again, David. Good evening now. Good evening. Just a couple of things just to add to what Peter said. Regarding the gates, that was a little over one million. That's a guesstimate. We were hoping, we've had a company that's been in here, he was here over the weekend, looking at the layout, and we're hoping to get a pretty good quote eventually. But there's another close to $500,000 just to install. It doesn't include electric. It doesn't include major engineering at every place that we put one of these gates, because you can't just put a gate at the end of a road and expect people are going to be able to pull in there. There's got to be enough room for people to stage. And if we have to turn somebody around, we have to have enough room for that as well. So those costs aren't even included in that, just so you understand that. Yes?
Chief, good question. What was the material for the gates that they were discussing?
Probably fiberglass. They seem to hold up a lot better, but they're a lot more expensive than the wooden ones. Okay. June 2017. This was the week of June 12th through the 18th. As you can see, the traffic as far as, on Saturdays, of course, Saturdays are our heaviest day. And I will tell you, and she said, "This is the worst year I've seen. I've been here almost 12 years now." And what I attribute to most of it, too, is these instant apps that are real-time on your phones. When they have an accident, there's people hitting it automatically, and it's turning people to the next, to the next turn that they can make. That's why I feel that we've seen the major increase that you're going to see here compared to years past. But just to give you a quick breakdown, what we did is I decided to, we're counting traffic. And when you see South Dogwood A, that's after the Country Club, and it's after the Marina. What we had been doing was counting traffic before the Country Club. So now we're getting a little bit more accurate reading, where you're seeing an average of 300 vehicles at any one time that aren't making it to East Dogwood. But there's still a significant number that are. Just, for example, that Saturday, there was 1,504, and this is before the major traffic starts to pick up, this is still early June, that traveled down South Dogwood versus 12,243 that traversed on NC 12. And then we were counting on Hillcrest, there were 650 for that day. But you can see at the bottom, the total, about eight percent of the vehicles were on South Dogwood, and 92%, 79,304, for the entire week traversed on NC 12. Week three. This covers June 19th through the 25th. Starting to pick up a little bit, as you can see, Saturdays, Saturdays and Sundays, they're our big days, Saturday being the highest. There was 2,113 that actually made it to East Dogwood versus 10,843 that were on NC 12. So it's picked up a little bit. There were 7,605 vehicles. The other thing that we did was, we're counting all week long. So it gives me a rough idea how many of these people are locals. And if you look at the average, it's pretty close to 1,000. So if you take 1,000 away from those numbers, that's a rough idea of how many locals, service people, those types of things that are trying to get north and not wanting to deal with NC 12. So there was 76,981 that were on NC 12 for week three. Then what we did is we did Sea Oats, and we were counting Sea Oats and Wax Myrtle. So out of that 2,113 that came up South Dogwood, almost all of them decided to go to Sea Oats. We had 1,967 vehicles on Sea Oats. And that, that's a tough road, as it is. And 990 that actually were on Wax Myrtle. Week four. This is the big one. This is actually the Fourth of July weekend, even though it goes 26 through July 12th. But this was the people coming in for that week of July 4th. There was 4,000 vehicles approximately on South Dogwood, and there was only 8579 on NC 12. So the majority of those, a lot of those vehicles decided to take the cut through. It went up to 14% for the entire week, which is just a little over 12,000 vehicles on South Dogwood versus 86%, which was just a little over 75,000 for NC 12. Sea Oats handled 2,424 vehicles. And Wax Myrtle enjoyed 1,745 of those vehicles. That's a lot of vehicles. Then week one of July, which was July 3rd through July 9th. As you can see, the numbers went down a little bit for Sea Oats. It was still 2,060 vehicles. It was 12% that cut through. It was about 10,000, a little over 10,000 for the entire week. And almost 73,000 were on NC 12. And then 1,159 actually traversed on Wax Myrtle on Saturday. And week two of July. Thank you. 2,688 on Saturday versus 9,330 that were on NC 12. 1,778 of those vehicles were on Sea Oats. Now, just keep in mind, not all of those are coming from South Dogwood. A lot of those are coming from Porpoise, going up through Wax Myrtle, Hickory, or Hillcrest, and over to that. But we have a counter where that's the ultimate place, there's no place else for them to turn around. So we know those numbers are accurate. And 10,000, yeah, 10,000, 1,056 that traveled on Wax Myrtle on Saturday. And as you can see, Sundays, they run a pretty close second as far as the numbers. Week three. This was July 17th through July 23rd. There was 3,162 vehicles on Saturday on South Dogwood versus 8,471 that were on NC 12. We had 1,905 that were on Sea Oats and 1,247 that traveled on Wax Myrtle. So it was a 13% that were cutting through versus 87%, a total of 71,000 that went on NC 12. It's traffic. We have to deal with it whether it's cutting through or on NC 12, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before I ask the town attorney to please comment on the aspects of these options, the legal aspects, I did want to say that we did discuss this with traffic engineers at other municipalities, and primarily on the West Coast. Those that we read were having some luck in addressing cut-through traffic and dealing with GPS apps. What we learned was that every one of them said, "There's no way the app is going to change." They are not going to change their ways. They're not going to change the app. The only way to deal with the app is through sign, is through taking, re-classifying a street, either no-left turn, no-right turn, or one-way. And that's the only way they've been able to take streets off the system. After a few weeks, the app will recognize that, and indeed, will not offer that street as an option. So that's the experience we can give.
Would it come back in a few weeks, though?
The only way it'll come back is if it's legal, if that sign comes down and traffic will go back.
That's what I mean, like.
Oh, in the end of the season.
Temporary ceiling.
Presumably so. That's a good question. Presumably so.
Are you just going to, you block it for a week, and then it's that quick that the next week, if it's not there, it's going to route?
Maybe it won't. That may be a good thing.
I don't know. I'm just, my question.
So I just want to clarify that to make sure, you know, we did try to do our best to experiment with the apps and discuss it with traffic engineers in other municipalities who are dealing with similar situations. Has gotten a lot of, similar situations are getting a lot of publicity. I think you've seen some in publications recently. That, I'd like for Ben, if he could comment on each of the options as far as legal ramifications, as far as liability and enforceability, if you could.
I'll do my best. In order of legal problems, I would say that the gated community concept probably has the greatest risk. Blocking the streets and bridges probably has the next risk, and then the no-left turn has the least risk from a legal perspective. The concept of no-through traffic is not illegal. You can certainly do that. You could certainly have signage. You could certainly adopt an ordinance that says there's no through-traffic. But the problem is, will the signage be enough to stop people? Because the chances of being able to actually enforce it are very limited. Or will the signage be enough to change the GPS apps without people, you know, they driven? by, does somebody know the signs there or are they driven by, the app knows that people are driving there? And my bet is the app knows that people are driving there and that's how they do it. So if it doesn't stop the people from driving, it may not help you with the apps.
Well, we got, we have signs up there.
That say no through traffic. So they don't help?
No, they don't help.
So the next step is to have an ordinance that says it's illegal to have, to, to do it.
School.
And the problem with the ordinance is, or the problem with enforcement with that is, is you can't tell at the beginning whether or not somebody's breaking the law. You actually can't tell at the end whether or not somebody broke the law unless you rode behind them or you ask them and they say, "Yeah, I just broke the law." The problem with that is, you gotta stop them. And to stop them, if you're stopping them as an individual officer, you gotta have, the Constitution requires you to have probable cause or reasonable suspicion at a minimum that they are breaking the law. Well, that reasonable suspicion can't be based on where they're from. You can't just look at the license plate and say, "That's a Pennsylvania plate, they came through, we're gonna stop them and see what they did." It's gotta be based on something you could see.
How about stickers on cars? Southern Shores residents have a sticker.
How do you know it's a Southern Shores resident who didn't just drive all the way through town and broke the law themselves? The, the sticker doesn't tell you the answer to whether or not...
It tells you whether they're out of town or not.
And that's not illegal.
Okay.
You don't have a reasonable articulable suspicion of illegal activity by being from somewhere else. You have a reasonable artic, and there are, there's actually, I think it was in Arizona, there was a case on a no-through traffic case where their court of appeals considered the question of whether or not it was legal to stop that car based on, no, I think it was nothing but the fact that they had gone into, it was a construction zone. So it wasn't even looking at the license plate. It was, the guy had gone into the construction zone. You and I, none of us would go into a construction zone that had a sign that said, "Do not enter, don't drive through." But this guy had and the court said that the stop wasn't good. Not just that they hadn't proved he'd broken the law because he didn't go to the other side, but that the stop wasn't good because they didn't have any ability to, to determine that he was breaking the law just by entering into the thing when it said you couldn't go through, it didn't say you couldn't enter. So there, lawyers and judges have made a royal mess of your ability to stop no-through traffic. There are also risks with having gates or, a gate is gonna turn into a checkpoint under the law essentially. And there are risks with having checkpoints. There are more steps to get a checkpoint right than you can count on your hand and there are very limited circumstances that you can have them in. The Supreme Court has limited them primarily to immediate public safety, road issues, DUIs. The Supreme Court has said, you can't stop people because you think that they're, you know, you're checking for drugs. You can't stop people for general criminal conduct checks. You can stop them to make sure they have a license and registration and insurance. You can set up checkpoints for that, you can set up checkpoints for DUIs and you can set up checkpoints for exigent circumstances like people running away from the police or someone who you know you're trying to catch and you have a specific program. As a creative lawyer, I, there is an angle where you might be able to have one, but it would probably be a loser. But even assuming you could have the checkpoint, you still can't ask the question.
Could you do a DUI checkpoint every Sa- Saturday?
No, the courts are very clear that you can't do it for a different rea, you know, you can't, you can't have an illegal reason to do it, supported by a legal reason to do it. You gotta have, it's all gotta be legal.
So can you do a checkpoint for license check every Saturday morning?
Yeah. But you can do that.
So can at school, you have a license check?
I think, I think there's some randomization that has to occur. You can't do it in exactly one place, but you have to shift it around some. But you could do a, you could, you could do it, you could do a license check if it was an actual license check and that's all you were doing. And if the court, and if the people who ever challenged it didn't get a hold of this discussion that we're having about that the reason why you're doing that license check is to actually stop through traffic. But the...
No, we're checking for license.
But even if you could stop the people, if you stop them on the 158 side and ask them, "Are you going through?" And they say, "Yes." So what? They hadn't broken the law yet. They haven't broken it until they've gone through. And I don't know if you want to charge people with attempted traveling through town, but that's, you know, so you, you can't get them there. So what you have to do is then stop them on the other end. And you have to ask them, "Did you drive through?" And then they've got this Fifth Amendment issue about self-incrimination where they don't have to answer your question. So it's not illegal to do it. And the chances are, you might never have a problem with it. And you might be able to enforce it and a court might uphold it and nobody's lawyer challenges it unless they watch this and where I've spelled out how you do it. But the other problem is, is it's not just the fact that Chief Cole might not be able to get a conviction. It's the fact that what I'm telling you now is that it's likely unconstitutional to do the majority of things you would have to do to enforce this ordinance. And somebody's gonna come back and sue you and get their attorney's fees and damages for that if they have someone creative like Ms. Schwartzman here representing them. And, 'cause I'm not creative. But that's where your risk lies with the no-through, through-traffic concept, if you, if you try and enforce it. It's hard to enforce and somebody wants to give you a hard time with a civil action, they may be able to, they may be, they may be able to show that there's enough case law out there that you knew or should have known that this was a constitutional violation. So that's the problem with no-through traffic. It's not illegal to do it, but it's really hard to enforce correctly and legally in the Constitution. You had a question? No, oh my goodness. You're very intensely watching. The no-left turn concept, I don't think that there are any real legal issues with that. Those are all political, policy, monetary issues that can be dealt with. Both the blocking streets or bridges and create a gated community have a, a problem with regard to dedication of public right-of-ways. And so Southern Shores is in a very unique position in that it already owns at least the majority, probably all of the underlying roadways and doesn't just have an easement. But when roadways are dedicated or transferred, in this case, I don't think that the Civic Association was paid for the transfer, the, the transfer of those roads was a dedication of those roads to the public. And that means the public has a right to use them and the public doesn't just include the citizens, it includes the entire public, people from everywhere in the United States. And to extinguish that, there is a process. And you have to be able to show that no one would be restricted from access to their property. Arguably, you may be able to show that either with the simple closing it in a spot or closing it completely through a gated community. The problem then becomes twofold. One, depending on how the neighborhoods were laid out, are there people who have private easements due to their subdivision layout that were transferred as part of the process that are not extinguished by the public easements? And then you are somehow putting a limitation on them. If you limit them in any way, you may have a takings claim. If you don't, then you probably want to go out and get easements from everybody and get everything set up from a legal perspective, documented-wise, that, that might be more trouble than it's worth. If you didn't own the roads, if you closed them, then they become owned by the people on either side of them. So if there's any road you don't own, then that would be the presumption. And the other problem with that is, is that there is a presumption in the statute that it is owned to the center line by the people on either side. So you would be set with the burden of proving that you do own the roads rather than, usually it's the other way around, that, that, the, the other party would be. The other issue is the dedication itself. The dedicators potentially could have a claim that you're in violation of your dedication and that you are stuck leaving them as roads. And I would say that they have a good claim and that you're stuck leaving them potentially as public roads. So there, there are a number of legal risks there that, that gets clearer and clearer, that gets worse with the gated community concept, which I think all of us have been somewhere that we've seen somebody barricade a town or something, barricade a road and probably nobody even really thinks about it, nobody even really notices. I don't think I've ever been in North Carolina in a, North Carolina municipality that was a gated community. I can't think of one.
Martin's Point.
It's not a municipality, it's a subdivision of Dare, it's a subdivision within Dare County, it's private.
So you're saying a private town is almost what you're saying.
Yeah. Well, that's what the gated community concept would be, is it's a private town. And I, I don't know of anywhere that that exists in North Carolina. I don't know that there's any precedent for that concept in North Carolina. And I have a funny feeling that the legislature wouldn't be real fond of the concept. And that it might be something that you would want special legislation to be able to do before you, you did it. Essentially, that, that, that process, I know of some steps you would have to take, but there are a number of steps that would be, it would take a lot more thought in getting deeper into the process and looking at a lot of title information to determine what to do next. So from a legal perspective, I would not recommend the gated community concept. And the, those are my basic thoughts on, on all of these.
So let me ask you a question, Ben. Ann lives on Hickory and it's backed up every Saturday and Sunday. What about her safety issue? If something happens to an individual, a resident that lives in one of these areas and emergency services can't move because the roads are backed up, I mean, what's her rights as far as a citizen to have that normal passage that we have on our streets?
And you have a duty...
I mean, there's guys on Sea Oats and Wax Myrtle and Hillcrest that can't back out of their driveway on Saturday morning and Sunday morning for a number of hours. I mean, the same thing happens, they have people on twelve.
Gary is from eight-thirty in the morning for Island at the very end of Sea Oats. So I get everything, like Chief said, but it's from eight-thirty last Saturday till quarter of seven. You cannot get out, period. It's wall-to-wall stop and drag. And so what happens if I have an emergency? That's a big, serious fear, especially in this community that's older.
I, I, I think that's a practical issue, but I don't think it's a legal issue.
So we don't have any rights?
But, but how is that different than, I mean, let's, let's be honest, look at Martin's Point. Martin's Point has, has a gated community, they've got no cut-through traffic. But if you think they can go anywhere from those same hours that you're talking about, then there's, this just can't happen. If you have to try to go across the bridge during those hours and you, you catch it wrong, you're in the same boat. It's not, this is a bigger problem. You know, let's say you're in Currituck, you're coming over, we do, we do basketball with the girls, I, I coach basketball. We had tournaments that happened to come during the summer. We're leaving crack of dawn to get up to Virginia Beach to try to beat the traffic or to miss it in a different way.
Missing it.
Yeah, and so...
A crime to do that.
This is a bigger problem. That, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
And, and I'm just answering from a legal perspective. I don't think the town has a considerable legal risk for being unable to provide services because of people using roads that the public has a right to use.
I just want to add just a couple of other things. Some of this council should be dealing with too is the town, that's where it's all, that's where it's all. And Currituck is allowing all these better mansions and they're adding probably three or four cars because there's so many families coming through. And they don't have to live with, with the effects of this, which is frustrating.
We're in the middle.
But I get two or three phone calls every month that are colorful, of these voicemails and after they get done cursing, they'll want to know why you run out there directing traffic. I've been doing this for thirty-five years. You can tell me where to direct the traffic to, I will be happy to direct it there. It's traffic, it's bumper-to-bumper, it's only gonna go as fast as the vehicle that's leading the way. And it's frustrating, you understand? We're working and we're trying to get some emergency medical calls, traffic accidents, domestic, so on and so forth. So not only do we feel your pain, we also have to work with you. But I think that we all need to target the town of Duck. And I've said it to the mayor before, there are people up there that will crosswalk anywhere they want and everybody's slowing down and stopping and calling them up. So some of that burden should be on them as well.
David and those of you in the, in the room still, Duck, as you may know, is, is doing a complete re, reorganization, revamp of their downtown area, what they call the downtown. And they're gonna limit the crosswalks from where they are now and hopefully not solve the problem, but make the problem not quite as bad as it is. Going back to the really first part of this conversation, which was started by Ms. Schwartzman, she mentioned the fact that, take a less, less drastic measure and try something that we, that might just reduce the numbers a little bit. Looking at the legal implications of all the things we've talked about and just from my perspective, the idea of limiting the left turn duration of the left turn light on 158 on the highway onto South Dogwood has been discussed by many other people. It's come up many times. I haven't, I haven't addressed this specifically with NC DOT, is see what they, what the, what the implications of that would be if they, if they just made it a, enough of a light change to allow three cars to come through and delay the time they can go, they can get through. We haven't discussed that in any kind of detail and that's something that either Peter or I could do pretty easily, not for this year probably, but for future, future use. I don't know what level of traffic though, if we, if we make that light last longer at South Dogwood, they can't make a left turn. Are they gonna sit there and wait and hope they get through four hours from now or forty-five minutes from now? Are they gonna drive up, up to Trinity Trail or Juniper Trail and cut through there? I don't know the answer to that and I don't think we would know unless we try to do it. And would that really solve our problem? I don't know the answer. I don't know the answer.
You'd have to have the same timing in, at Juniper as you would Dogwood, otherwise if not, they'll call off and down there and come across.
Right. Well, then they can go around too.
And they still go around the neck of your turn and we go to the shopping center and come back.
All the time, yeah.
But it's a, it's a start.
It, it, it's something that needs to be tried and...
They can't control that left turn number of seconds that you're, they can put it to like thirty seconds, you can get three cars through there and that's it. Or they can put it at two minutes. I mean, we come in and out of Juniper, so we know what the time is for us.
We know, we know from just driving the road that I can typically, that you'll get ten to twelve cars through on a light cycle.
Peter, a question.
That's my observation.
Question on the no-left turn, you know, at the Monument, they've got that box light that says no-left turn when they close on Highway 158?
Yeah.
Is that what we're...
No-right turn.
No-right turn, no-left turn, depending on which way you come. Is that what we're...
What, what was described to me was that they would cut off, disengage the left signal during these times. No, in other words, here you imagine down, this is what was describing to me, the left lane is a turn lane. And so that would be barricaded off, so you couldn't even enter that lane and there would be no-left arrow engaged in, during the no-left turn process at this intersection. I, I'm not sure, I'd have to go back down, I'm not sure what that one looks like, to be honest with you.
It's just a box about this big and what happens is the, the arrow stops automatically, the red and lights light up on that box that says, "No-left turn if you..." if you're coming one way and no-right turn if you're going the other way. I mean, it just shuts you down, you can't go into it.
Right, you can't go anywhere there, I mean, the gate's closed.
Well, they closed the gate too, that's the other thing. If they do it through.
They, they closed the gate.
At the monument itself, okay. What was described by DOT, this one to me would be, if the town wanted to talk about it, it would be barricades where the left lane, the turn lane would be, they couldn't even, you couldn't even drive in the left lane during these hours. And there would be no signal whatsoever engaged to, for a left turn, period. Is what I, the way it was described to me.
If you did that at, at, at South, South Dogwood, you'd also have to do it at, at Juniper.
And most likely other spots here on NC 12 as well.
Yeah, well, you know, we're already, people are already cutting over on Wax Myrtle or on to Wax Myrtle.
I, I still like the toll idea. Can we petition the assembly to allow us to charge a toll to charge to hire all these extra officers?
And, and to pave our roads?
Yeah.
Peter, I, I want to thank you and, and David and, and Ben for your, for your work on this. It's, we put a lot of effort into it, I know, because I was involved in it to some degree. And it's been a lot of effort and energy put into it. I think, I don't think we just throw up our hands and say we can't, we can't do anything. I think we need to approach as, maybe take a more, a more, uh, more moderate approach initially and see if we can make some kind of a left turn control work for us. I, I think I don't know is what, what we're going to be happy with as far as volume. We're looking at 10,000 cars or 4,000 cars or 3,000 cars. Where do we, what, what's our objective? To get down to 200 cars, which is going to be really difficult to do? Because you've got people that are going to come from, from the shopping center, that, and bigger numbers than that, going back to the, toward the west. But from my perspective, I'd like to see us try something for this next season where we can get, work with the state and see what they would do with the light cycles, or if we need to close the lane, how are we going to do it? And come up with, with some kind of suggestion and recommendation for council to consider.
Well, that in addition to just look at the signage and see if we can put something out there to deter people from going that way.
Well, that's the idea. Like you remember, last year, a year before, the state helped us a lot with keeping traffic who was, that were going, was going through the, through Southern Shores and Kitty Hawk and on South, staying in the right lane, not getting over in the, in the center lane or the left lane. And that seemed to help with traffic flow. It didn't change our volume on South Dogwood, but it, and Hickory and Sea Oats, but it helped with the traffic flow. Maybe they would help us with saying there's no-left turn or limit the left turn time.
This last weekend, the intersection up here was clear and Dogwood was backed up. I mean, I think everybody's going Dogwood Trail now.
That's because it was an accident. And your apps are sending you to whatever the.
Yeah.
Yeah, that wave app is, uh, everybody uses it.
Yes.
What, Chief, do you have any sense of, and maybe there's no way to measure this. How, how, we've got these numbers, but do we have any sense? I imagine there's some locals who are using this cut-through too.
Oh, yeah, lots and lots of them.
Seventeen. But Chief.
There, there, there are a lot of locals. You know, another concern I would say, well, our concerns is back to 2003. It's the same issues, the same complaints. The only thing that's changed is this right up here. Well, one thing that I did see there, I think Peter mentioned, is that when, I don't remember which one it was, but the council was pushing real hard and the DOT said, well, sorry, oh, I can see. Put a turn lane, a middle lane, a four lane. So, you know, that concerned me too. I don't want to see us end up with that. But if you're going to be dumping all that out of your traffic content and see, well, they may, they may ultimately say, well, we're going to do something.
But Chief, wouldn't they have to put that middle lane and widen that road in Duck in order to help us?
Good luck.
I know, but I'm saying in order to help us, it wouldn't matter if they widened the road. It's still going to bottleneck right there at Duck.
Yeah, what they're going to do is they're going to plant a button, they're going to put a high-through barrier right down through the middle.
Yeah, they're, they're going to eliminate the middle lane.
They're going to eliminate that middle lane.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
Ursula won't say.
Back to Ann's and everybody's, we're all concerned about this project, we're all on the same page. But if, if we did little things to change, I know they're directing the traffic through Dogwood. Even if you stopped it with a light, you're still going to get the tremendous traffic coming up onto Sea Oats. You know, on, going down, they're going to turn left. But if we did that light, if we held the light or we said no-left turn on Dogwood, and every other week we had police at one or the other stops, you know, coming uphill aggressive. It got, the word got out to these companies, to Google, that, you know, the sub-insurance is pretty difficult to get through now. Because you never know what you're going to hit. I don't know if that would work, but anything to just slow them up or, or.
Try to discourage them a little bit.
Discourage them.
Discourage them.
It's not as much, but it's.
But we have, it's unbelievable, we have them coming out from the sound. But they come up from the sound and they try and get onto Sea Oats and I'm right there at that corner. And people get in fights because they're moving through, the people on Sea Oats don't, don't let them through. It's unbelievable. I mean, if we can just do some things to, I have one more question too, even though the chief.
Are you wanting public comment?
Yeah, let's, let's, can we, can we do that? Have public comment? Let's see where we are on the agenda here. Are, are we, are we?
Mr. Mayor, I did want to clarify one thing. Since the chief, chief doesn't have a mic back there. I think that's important to go on the record about DOT's position with the flyover proposed in the past and also the third lane and fourth lane on NC 12. That was brought up in the past, that if more cars get dumped back on NC 12, that could potentially happen. So I think that's important to keep in the back of everybody's mind, that that's, that's something that could happen. Not speaking for DOT.
That's, that's a good point. I, that going back, as Peter just said, going back in history though, if, if the NC DOT actually offered town of Southern Shores the option of letting them come in and put the, put Highway 12 on a, on a rebuild cycle from, you know, if you go back to 2002, '03 or '04, we'd, it had been rebuilt by now, where they would, made it a three-lane road. And they would, they would have not just rebuilt the road, but they'd also used the right-of-way available for stormwater management as well. So it might have been, in, in, in hindsight, it might have been something we could, we should have considered. But it didn't happen, and here we're, we're living with that, with part of the consequences of that. At this point, I'm, I'm ready to go on to the next agenda item, which is general public comment, if you ever runs in favor of that.
So we just going to drop, uh?
We're not going to drop it, we're going to, we're going to look at some of these options we just talked about tonight and take, take input from the, from the people who've spoken and say, what, what, what other things should we do, be doing, council? Bring it back and talk about it some more. I'm not, I'm not going to drop it. I'm going to take, take some of the suggestions tonight and decide if we want to try to implement any of those or take some of the comments from this, from the citizens here, try to implement some of those.
So we're going to, Peter or who's going to contact DOT and talk about the no-left turn? What, is that?
It, it, we, we, we will continue our dialogue with Mr. Jennings and, and, and with the highway commissioner about that. And Mr. Jennings and his traffic engineer are the two we would have to talk about with to see what they would agree to do themselves.
Peter and I will, I'll take the responsibility of communicating with Mr. Moran and Peter will probably work with Mr. Jennings.
Well, let me ask you this, could we invite them to a meeting?
Yes, they're willing to come. They've said they're, they're willing to come and, and talk with the council.
That would be great. That way we could ask questions directly and give the public an opportunity to ask questions too.
Well, the, but the big thing I want to make sure is Ursula's point about Sea Oats, that we, we've got to be comprehensive. This isn't just a Dogwood problem, this is, this is a town problem.
Well, yeah, and I, I do want to comment on one thing, that we want to get them out of here quick. We don't want to slow them down. And just putting a policeman there is not going to get them out. And Chief, he said it, it's not going to get them out any quicker.
I move traffic, because we use the Watkins Glen, we move 180,000 people in six hours on NASCAR rides. But you, it's the opposite effect here, you're filling a bucket. Back then, you're, you're a loading bucket and you're going out before a week. They're coming from four-lane road into one single lane. As soon as they hit Duck, it's just.
It's hard.
So if you had cooperation from Duck, do you think you could move them?
Probably not. Currituck and Dare. They can't help us out here along with the, they're not, and the highway patrol, they just.
No, they're not, you don't understand.
We're all in danger. But I could have 20 officers out here, I can say, if you can't move traffic, any feds couldn't move right now. Because you have no place to move it to. So I'd love to be able to.
Does it clear out more of the stuff?
By the time you get, get north of Village Park, I think for the job.
And then clear out.
Oh, we've had open discussions.
Who you are? He's an arch. Can we, can we do anything to disrupt cell phone communication during that? Can we jam the signal so that they come in and there's no apps? Because you.
So, so at a minimum, Peter, Peter and I are going to maintain a dialogue with NC DOT through either Mr. Moran or Mr. Jennings. And see what our other options are with, with the, with the Highway 12, 158, not Highway 12, South Dogwood and 158 intersection, see what we can do there to minimize the traffic turning left if we possibly can. And have them come here and talk to us about this, probably at our next meeting.
It, it may be the October meeting, I don't know. We'll have to ask them, it, it could either be September or October.
Okay.
If that's the consensus of council, I will invite both of them to come with the, and also bring Jason Davidson, the traffic engineer, most likely.
Yeah, something that, something we've been talking about for how many years, uh, 17, 15 years, 17 years of Mid-Currituck Bridge?
Yeah, I've been here 16 years and it was supposed to be built.
We've been talking about the Mid-Currituck Bridge for at least 15 years, maybe longer.
The study, the last study started in 2012.
So that's, that's 15, that's 15 years ago. Something, and we've talked about a flyover at the intersection of Highway 158 and Highway 12, which means, it means you fly over to go stop.
If they would, if you're getting the accelerator, she doesn't, what they're doing, 60% of the traffic that comes to Duck, you talk down here, is going.
Going to Currituck?
Going north of Duck.
Going north of Duck, well, that's, that's basically.
Yeah, that's a long-term solution, but we can't wait another 10 years for a long-term solution.
Well, is there any, is there any merit at all in discussing an alternative means of getting around Duck? In other words, is it possible to put some sort of a, a bridge, like, like the Mid-Currituck Bridge, from the White Memorial, parallel to our sound side, all the way just past Duck and back onto Highway 12?
Another seven mile bridge?
It's not seven mile, it's not seven miles.
Maybe four.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, it's just an option. It hadn't been discussed. Let's go to general public comment. Hey, thank you all for your comments tonight, we appreciate it. Al Urling. Good evening, Al.
Good evening. That's what everybody's talking with right now, my name's Al Urling from the South Dogwood Trail. What the discussion now is tonight, you know, is for the last month, month and a half, as same as Peter's been doing, I've been calling, been on the phone with different organizations, different municipalities, town managers from California, Massachusetts, Maryland, Minnesota, about the problem. And I've basically gotten the same answer, is there's damn near nothing you can do except for interrupt them. Okay? And there's been some towns that have got comical to the point of what they're doing. And I have to realize that state laws are different. So what somebody's telling me they can do, I looked it up and find out you can't do it in North Carolina. You know? This weekend, Chief, with the WASD app, I have it on my phone. As an experiment, I went around town. On Saturday morning at 9:30, they, the app turned around and told everybody not to go past Southern, uh, South Dogwood. They were police at the intersection of 12 and 158. Sunday afternoon, when the traffic started picking up again, whether it happened to be the people that got kicked out of Hatteras, got some reservations up north, we went through a period, Sunday afternoon, that got terrible. Right? And when I, as soon as I opened it up, it showed Dogwood Trail. And when I went into the app, it turned around and told me that Dogwood Trail was the main road to the northern beaches. Route 12 was an end case alternative. Okay? So, you know, we're getting beat up on this. We know that, everybody knows it. And there are a few things that even some of the people in Raleigh have told me, you know, and I'm not going to get into it, it'll be way over to three minutes. There are some tricks of the trade that they turn around and said, legal loopholes, that things can be done. And basically what it comes down to is we have to figure out how to disrupt the app legally. I'm not talking about sending waves through broadband or anything, you know. They said jostle streets around, all of a sudden turn one, one way. Right? Our resource officer put a blue light on top of his truck, park at one's place for a while. It tells WASD that there's police activity. You can bounce people around town like that, it disrupts the app. And just one other thing quick, when you talk about whoever.
Sorry.
Let him finish, let him finish.
Finish. There's just one thing about the left-hand turn lane that was brought up to me. Is in North Carolina, most of the left-hand turn lanes, when they stop and green traffic moves both ways, they blink yellow, so traffic can still turn, have that turn red.
Yeah.
Okay, so they can only get that short period of time.
Right, if you're going to use that as, as your, as one of your methods.
If you're going to shorten that period of time and then turn it red. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Barker? Evening, Dave.
Good evening. My name is Dave Barker and I live right on the corner of East and North Dogwood. And, you know, I, I don't come to a lot of the meetings. But this one, because of the traffic, if we want to deter the traffic through, I still say, like I said probably 10 years ago when I first came to the town, use the police that we have and deter the traffic. Word will get out. They don't stop at the intersection of North and East Dogwood. Start writing citations. All you got to do is stand right in my front yard, you know, and just walk out, boom. And the town can make a lot of money, they could sure pay for another officer. But we have to do something, we have to start somewhere. For 10 years, we've talked about doing this and doing that. Let's get our heads together and try something. Even if it doesn't work, we haven't tried anything yet. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Candace Horzman? She's, she's on here.
Okay. Greetings again. I'd like to start out by saying thank you to Chief Cole. Your numbers are excellent, I really appreciate the count. It's staggering to think that on July 4th, nearly 50% of the traffic going north went through our town. And that's why I was miserable all day, so I, I understand it better. I also want to thank all of you. I think this has been a thoughtful discussion and for once, we're moving in a direction of can-do rather than what we can't do or what's hard to do or what's illegal to do. To Gary's point about checkpoints, there was a time then when there were checkpoints set up on South Dogwood Trail to deter people from using that as a cut-through. up on South Dogwood Trail to deter people from using that as a cut-through. I don't know if that was in Chief Cole's tenure. It was one of the deterrents that was used, and we residents grumbled about it, because we got stopped periodically. But I'd love to see it happen next July 4th, frankly, just that one date, checkpoint set up on South Dogwood Trail. I think the traffic has, you keep referring to history, the main problem in the 90s and early 2000s was Highway 12. I've been around for all this time, I've seen it develop, I have property over on the Oceanside, I've lived in the woods. I complained in 1998 in Idlet, when we were talking about the bridge, I was the only person to talk in favor of a bridge, and at that time, I was addressing the Highway 12 traffic exclusively. The problem in the town didn't really occur until the last 10 years, and I'm on record as saying for Hickory Trail that I opposed a decrease in the speed limit on that road, when all my neighbors wanted to go from 25 to 20. Today, I would take it in a heartbeat, and I'd take speed bumps, too, on Hickory Trail, because there's been so much more traffic, and clearly, the apps, the technology are contributing to it. I don't have a big problem with the southern traffic that's come, it's staggered, it's all the arriving traffic. So when you break it down, you're looking at Saturday and Sunday arrival times. And I just want to reinforce that it's a quality of life issue, you know, it's the environment, it's repair of the roads, it's aesthetics, it's also quality of life, and you may not think that it affects our tourist economy, but it does. I can tell you, as a rental property owner, it absolutely does. And when we start rooting people on the low-traffic road to avoid Highway 12 because there's an accident, it affects our renters. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. Ursula Bateman. Hi, Ursula.
Hi. To get off the weekend, Chief Cole, there's a problem now that we're seeing on Seots, a real problem with speeding during the week, because now we've been discovered by everybody, and with the water park, you know, people are coming down from Corolla, and it's much easier to come again through the back way than Route 12. And the speeding is, I'm out there gardening a lot, and I have my dog, and I'm out there, and it's just a real problem. So I would, I'm with Ann, I'd like to see speed bumps, I know we don't need them on Saturday and Sunday, but speed bumps, I'd also, I'd go for, which I was against at one point, but lowering that speed limit through Southern Shores. When I'm driving, I drive at 20 miles an hour, just to annoy the hell out of the people behind me. But I'm like, let's go down to 15 if we have to. You know, again, back to any little deterrent we can make anyway, but the water park is going to be an increasing problem, because the more it gets popular, and the more homes that are up there, they're all coming through again, the back roads. So, you know, everything else has been said. I've been here 25 years, and I've never seen anything like it, and it is a residential area. I hate to see all this, and it's affecting the whole town, so.
Thank you, Ursula. Joey Sullivan?
I'm just going to add one light thing we could do, you know, they were talking about closing the bridges. If you put a gate on the bridge, and had it down at certain hours, and issued passes, or made it a toll bridge, and issued passes to the residents and property owners, so that the people could get in, you could close it down, but that's probably not going to fly. But that would be one alternative, with a gate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
I like the toll.
At this time, we'll close public comment. Thank you. I have one, just one comment I want to make, before we turn it over to the rest of the council to make theirs. This past Wednesday, Mr. Haskett and I went to a Almarl, RPO, RTCC, and RTAC board meeting, and Transportation Secretary Jim Trogdon spoke to us about their state's priorities as far as the road rebuild schedules they have in mind, and what they're trying to do. It turns out that we're looking at a totally different perspective than what they were talking about three, and four, and five years ago. About four years ago, they went over to a building program that was controlled at the state level, everything had to go to the state first, and we considered there, and local districts didn't have too much authority, and limited much less money to work with. Mr. Trogdon is talking like he's going to go back to the older system, where it's going to be the local districts are going to control which roads get attention first in their district, and they'll have more authority. Most projects will now be handled through the local NC DOT offices instead of through the Raleigh office. They're hoping to see projects move up and accelerate the time they'll start by at least one to two years. The other big priority he had was to decrease the number of fatalities which occur on our state's roads. We have the ninth-largest population of drivers in the country, we have the fifth-worst record for motorist fatalities. One of the problems that he's trying to correct also, the last thing I mentioned, is that their state is about, a typical project is taken in the state of North Carolina between three and seven years to get off the ground and get started. And the reason for that has been, I think, traditionally because the state tended to want to permit and design and things in a separate process, and one had to wait for the other, had to be sequential, instead of being simultaneous. So if he's able to implement that, it should save a lot of time in far as projects moving forward. That's all I have this evening, I appreciate the people that spoke tonight, and listened to what they had to say, I think it was very important that everybody chipped in and said what they thought, and I think council did a good job in trying to digest some of the things that Peter and David and Ben told us tonight. Anyway, thank you. Mayor, Fred?
Yeah. Speaking of the traffic, do we, it sounds like the no-left turn option is probably one of the best right now to pursue. Do we need a motion to direct Peter to continue his investigation of, or you...
No, I'm recording consensus from the council that that's what you want us to explore.
Peter and I both heard what you said.
Can we, I'm fine with consensus, as you're saying, but I'd ask that when Peter and Tom speak to DOT, do they come back to council before we make any actionable...
Yeah, and I would like, I'd like for them to come talk to us from DOT also.
Yeah, that's good.
I understood, that's what we understood all ago, that we were going to invite them to come either September, October, whichever is convenient to them. And at that point in time, hopefully, the council will know what you would have to fork out for if we had to do that as an option, and then you could adopt it formally, as you said, as a planning objective for the next budget cycle.
Okay, sounds good. That's all I have.
Thanks, Fred. Leo?
Tourism Board didn't have a meeting in July, we've got a steering committee meeting next Tuesday, and then a full meeting will be on the 17th, so the grant committee, Peter, will meet probably somewhere in that timeframe, and we'll get to it there. That's all I got.
Thank you. Chris?
I don't really have anything. I mean, I appreciate all the work that Peter and Chief Cole did, and Ben, that was a really good report, and I know how much time it took you to do it, and it's not like you don't have something else to do, so it's good, and it provides good information. At least we have something to compare now, and I'm up for getting creative with some solutions. We've got to work around some obstacles, clearly.
Gary? I'll make a motion, we go in close session? Thank you, Gary. Counsel?
A motion to go into close session? May I? That be pursuant to 143...
I've got to tell him what that is.
He didn't see it, he did this, and that was what...
You do actually have to state it on board.
All right. I'm going to amend your motion slightly, Gary.
Just go ahead and make it.
I move to go into close session pursuant to current statute, what's the statute, 143-318-11A6, to consider a personnel matter regarding individual public officer employed at the town. Thank you.
Second.
I have a second?
And I'm in favor.
All in favor? We're now in close session.